All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
This is a meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. It's the vision of the Greenfield Public Schools that every student has access to an academically rigorous, enriching, and well-rounded education that affords them opportunities to be well-connected scholars and contributing members of the broader society in which they live. Thanks everyone for coming, Member Exstrom is on her way, she just sent me a text. But we do have a quorum, however, if, Katie, could you, Member Karen, could you call the role for us?
Alright, Mayor Martin?
Here.
Susan Hollins?
Here.
Adrian Nunez?
Here.
And myself, we are here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Cameron is absent this evening.
And Member Exstrom's on the way, as I mentioned. I also forgot to state that we are being recorded by GCTV and broadcast live. If there's anyone else in the audience that is recording, can you please let us know? Seeing no one, we'll just continue on. Alright, so our first item is to approve draft minutes from 3/13/19. Can I have a motion to approve and accept the minutes from 3/13/19?
So, seconded.
So moved by Mayor Martin, seconded by Member Karen. Any discussion? Member Hollins?
Page two of six. Page two of six, just a clarification, under Roman numeral five, Business A Financial Reports, first item, funds for teachers' pay during summer encumbered in a reserve account. I remember the question, and it had to do with the fiscal year. And the answer was, in the current fiscal year, when the year ends, the pay, the summer pay of the year that's ending will be put in a reserve account from that year's budget and paid out in the next year. That was the clarification, it had to do primarily with the year. Funds for, so it says, funds for teachers' pay during the summer is encumbered in the prior year? Do you know what I'm saying? This doesn't explain what the clarification was.
Okay, can you just say what you would like the first full point to read?
Funds for teachers' pay during summer months is encumbered in a reserve account from the year of the contract. The discussion was just clarifying what year the money was from that she used to pay in the summer.
So at the end, in reserve account from prior year?
Contract. Prior year budget, yes. Does July 1 start?
Does that adequately reflect what?
I think the issue is during the summer would include both prior to and after July 1, which is the start of the new fiscal year. So after July 1, we're still paying out teacher salaries from the prior year. They continue being paid through the summer of the prior fiscal year. But to clarify, you would have to say that they're paid out of the prior year after July 1.
Yes.
Not during the summer.
Okay.
That would clarify the minutes, thank you. So it would say, funds for teachers' pay during summer after July 1, encumbered in a reserve account from the prior year.
Thank you. Any further discussion or clarification on that? Susan Farber, did you capture that? Thank you. Okay, so, great, there's a motion to accept the minutes. Now that we've made this change, we'll accept the minutes with the change. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. Motion carries, it's to accept the minutes from the last month, yeah. Okay, great, so also in your packet are several draft minutes from subcommittee. There was discussion at the Policy Subcommittee regarding how to accept and approve draft minutes from subcommittee, and it was suggested that at the full committee meetings, we go through and actually accept the subcommittee minutes. This is a new practice, so, yes, Member Hollins?
I would have a concern about that, because the body responsible for subcommittee meetings is the subcommittee, and I think it isn't the full committee responsible for the subcommittee meetings.
So, thank you, Member Hollins, so I was bringing this up, just to let you know a little bit about the conversation, we will have discussion on Policy Subcommittee here in just a minute. So for today, I actually don't want us to necessarily vote in the subcommittee budget, or, excuse me, subcommittee minutes, because I think there is a little bit of information that needs to be had, I'd like to check in with AG's office and find out about best practice in that regard, so I just want to kind of plant the seed for you all about that, and that this is, this has been discussed. Anyway, the draft, oh, there's several draft minutes in here from subcommittee. Some of the subcommittee minutes are going to be helpful in today's conversation. And those are there for you to enjoy, there were two late additions that came through email today that I believe are printed here, great, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to public comments. Are there any members of the public that are here to comment? Great, fantastic. I see a couple hands, yeah, come on up. And I think you know the routine, you've been here before. So, Member Exstrom? Could you put on a timer for three minutes, please? Awesome, thank you. And if you could just please state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, my name is Crystal Zimmer, 10 and 1/2 Stanley Street in Greenfield. It took me a while to figure out exactly what I wanted to say this evening. There was a lot of anger that I had after reading the proposed budget that the mayor had submitted to the city council. I decided instead to come here to speak to the committee members who did listen to the public, and who instead of ignoring public comment and not even looking up once during my first appearance this year, used not only their heads to fight for what was right, but also their hearts. I wanted to tell you how appreciative I am that you did fight to create a budget proposal that considered the safety of students from bus routes to early care. I applaud your forward thinking about growth and progress in the hiring of new positions. I am grateful for your considerations regarding the concerns of our special ed population and those students who need help and have nowhere else to get it but in our schools. I thank you for putting your very best forward, and I will be doing my very best to appeal to the city council to consider the mayor's budget for the school district as abysmal, and put out that it doesn't even level the budget from last year. I cannot imagine our district next year without the increases that were requested. The requested changes were so that we could provide minimum services for our schools, and assure a bright future for our kids. If the mayor's budget passes, I just want you to let, just want to let you know that I recognize that you tried, and at least most of the board has our children's best interest at heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I wanted to let you and the community know that Greening Greenfield is going to be holding a meeting based around the book Drawdown, which is a collection of 100 ideas most effective in reducing climate-challenging conditions. So how to reduce, what we need to reduce in order to make the world a little bit healthier. And we're having that meeting on June 3, and it'll be at the library, and our intention and hope is to have as many young people there as part of the conversation as possible, and decision-makers, which includes, of course, people on the council here, with the intention of, among other things, listening to the kids, listening to the concerns of teenagers, and, well, whoever's there, and then working together to say, how can we make Greenfield a more environmentally supportive and healthy place? So it's June 3 at the library, and Greening Greenfield, if you want more information, it's on the Greening Greenfield website, so I just wanted to invite all of you there and whoever is listening. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, I see none, so we will move on to our reports. Student representatives, are the high school representatives here? Alright, why don't we start with you, we also have some members of the middle school here today.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, every, woo! Sorry.
It happens.
So I'll start with clubs. Student Council is helping at the Murphy Park cleanup this Saturday. They are having a conference at Turner's Falls this Friday, and they are hosting a dance, the Spring Fling, on May 3 from 7 to 10. Key Club helped sell tickets and sell concessions at the play that was recently, recently happened at the high school. And they regularly volunteer at Stone Soup Cafe for the community meals. Drama Club had their production of Clue, which I think went really well. I went to watch it, and they had really good costumes, and the acting was superb. And I think that the audience, we had a good amount of audience compared to years past, so it was a success. The Spanish Club is going to a museum about Africans in Mexico Tuesday after vacation. The French Club had their last coffee house, which is really sad, and they had a pie tasting competition, which was something different and really cool. The AV Club is actually making a music video for a local band, which I think is really neat. FBLA recently went to the state conference this week, and some students placed fourth in the state for journalism, accounting, computer problem solving, and cybersecurity. Spectrum is organizing a day of silence on Friday, and they're passing out ribbons and pins, and they're creating t-shirt designs, and they continuously visit GMS. Green Room, they have a cooking club every Monday and Wednesday, and today they made tomato soup and garlic bread, and I had a taste, and it was really good. NHS recently sold Yankee candles to raise money for the Relay for Life team. And the Triumph Music Honor Society had a meeting on Monday, and they discussed how to make mentoring better, upcoming elections, and the Memorial Day Parade. And the band recently went to MICA, and we got bronze. So I'll move on to sports now. Softball, their next game is tomorrow against Belcher Town at 3:30, and it's a home game. Baseball has their next game tomorrow at Athol at 4:00 PM. Boys tennis had a game last Tuesday against Central, and they lost 1 to 4, but their next game is at Holyoke on Friday at 4:00 PM. Girls tennis won against Frontier 4 to 1 last Wednesday, and their next game is at Pope Francis at 4:00 PM. The boys track won their first meet against Palmer, but they lost their second meet against Frontier, and they have another meet this Friday against Mahar at 3:30. And the girls track, their next meet is against West Springfield at 3:30. And that is it.
Super, thank you, that's all great news. Any questions for our student rep? Alright, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some special representatives today from the Greenfield Middle School. Who's here today? Yay!
Hello, I'm Shane Toomey, a 6th grade leader in student council.
And I'm Isla Varnan, a 5th grade leader in student council.
We're here to talk about middle school student council and our recent Shout Out Kindness Week.
Our student council consists of about 50 students throughout grades 5, 6, and 7. Many come to after-school meetings every other week, but those who can't are welcome to come to advisory meetings every other week.
Student council's goal is to help our school and local communities, and our, and local communities and act as possible leaders inside and outside of the building.
Some of our activities include running Spirit Week, and running social events for our peers, collecting and delivering donations to Shriners Children's Hospital, and volunteering at the Greenfield Winter Carnival.
Our most recent activity was that we invented this year was Shout Out Kindness Week. We decided we wanted to focus and celebrate the kindness we see all around our building each day. We made the shout-outs loops and offered them to everyone in the building to recognize students' kindness.
I brought a few of the shout-outs that were made today. So this one is to Arthur for being very nice to me and letting me use his things, from Malik. This one is to Ms. Isla for being a good friend and always being there for me, from Millie. To Tiandre for being my friend every time you see me, and you always give me a warm hi or a warm welcome, from Josiah. And to Alessa for always being there for me when I'm sad or upset, from Josiah.
At the, at the end of the week, each grade held its own kindness pep rally run by us, the student council. At the rallies, we announced and celebrated as many shout-outs as we can squeeze in an hour, and we still had many left to deliver to individual students. There's definitely a ton of kindness in our building, and it was really fun and refreshing to see that.
We are looking for ways to spread our message of kindness out into the Greenfield community, perhaps finding ways to display messages of kindness and encouragement on Main Street. If you have any ideas for helping us make that happen, please contact our advisor, Ms. Nguyen, at the middle school. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you tell me again the name of your advisor?
Ms. Nguyen.
Nguyen, thank you. Are there any questions for our middle? Oh, hi, Ms. Nguyen. Great, I might email you later. Thank you so much for sharing that, I love the idea of these kindness shout-outs getting out into the community, and I love the idea of them being all over the middle school, so, really cool. Any questions, comments? Member Hollins?
Just like to congratulate you for speaking in front of the school committee and all these people, and I'm so happy our school has this leadership opportunity for you. And I'm just really glad you're here and that you have that confidence to come talk to us.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment or question? Member Exstrom?
You guys have done much better than I ever have sitting at that table. Well done.
Thanks a lot. And you all and your friends are welcome back anytime, okay? If you ever have anything you want to share with us, we would love to have you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So my report this evening is quite brief. Just want to say a thank you to all of our staff and administrators, and I was reviewing the minutes, all of the many subcommittee minutes, and thinking about the day-to-day of all of our administrators and our teachers, and I just wanted to take a minute and express some appreciation for everyone that works for the Greenfield Public Schools, and not just administrators and teachers, that extends to all of our staff. There's so much that goes into coordinating a safe, really healthy, supportive environment for our students, and I see that, and I want each of you to know that. That's it for my report. Not much of one, I guess. Superintendent, what do you have for us, I think there's quite a bit?
Okay, you have to turn to page 50, I think, to get to my report, past all the minutes. It is the page titled Superintendent's Report. And in this report, I've provided a number of updates that are important, but I've also provided some updates on the goals and activities that are taking place throughout the district, not just myself, but in our schools and in our offices, that work towards the goals that this committee has set. And those are, they're not static, they're dynamic, we're working on them every day. And so I wanted to provide you an update, and that's here. For those of you watching at home, these are always online, they're posted on our website, go to the School Committee tab, and they are posted in the materials for this meeting, as they always are, they're posted in advance of the meeting if you're interested. There are some extra copies of the packets up here, if anybody would like these giant packets to take a look through, there are a few extras up here. I'll start with the district updates, and I do have my Grants Manager here tonight. I'd like to start by announcing that we have been awarded a $105,000 grant from the governor's office. You have in your packet an award letter from the governor. I will read it to you. Dear Superintendent Harper, congratulations, we are pleased to notify you that the Greenfield Public Schools has been awarded a Fiscal Year 2019 and FY '20 Fund Code 336, Improving Student Access to Behavioral and Mental Health Services Grant in the total amount of $105,000. We want to thank you for your commitment to building comprehensive, integrated continuums of support for students to improve their behavioral and mental health outcomes. Through this funding and your continued support, we hope to expand access to great educational opportunities in the Commonwealth. And provide some additional information. Through this very exciting grant, which is effective essentially immediately, we are convening a meeting and pulling together work to build trauma-informed teams at the district level and at the schools, and to provide additional behavioral and mental health support, and to extend and expand our partnerships with community organizations, including clinical and support options, and other ways that we expand services to mental health right in our schools every day. Thank you to everybody that worked on this grant, Matt Holloway, Chris Nozel, and in our schools. This is exciting and helps us continue to do good things for kids. Next, I have an update on special education programs. In your packet, you have a letter from Director Holloway, which provides an overview. There's no action required on the committee's part tonight, but you requested an overview of the programs and services. And many of you may be surprised at the range of supports that we provide. Special education is not any particular program, or is not one-size-fits-all, and we work to address individual student needs. But you have an overview of the many different ways that that currently looks right now, today, in our schools, right from the Academy of Early Learning up through the high school. And it's quite an interesting picture of our specific programming in particular classrooms. This is in addition to the ways that we work with special needs and other students throughout the, throughout the day in our regular education classrooms in inclusion settings. So you have that report. Next, I was asked to provide an update on Green River School. The Green River School was the subject of a proposal earlier this year, which came through the committee for the Great Schools, an alternative educational setting. We did work very hard to prepare that proposal. It's my understanding at this time that the city is working on an RFP or an RFQ, a procurement for the heating system still, and that that is in the process of going back out to bid. And so at this time, we are awaiting the results of that bid, and then the installation of a heating system before any further action can occur on that building. It is possible that that would delay a fall opening. Staffing a program would, of course, be dependent on having funding for those new positions in addition. Next, I wanted to provide you an update on the Health Education Task Force. We have in our schools a significant interest in expanding our health education curriculum. We've convened a group of educators, and we've heard from a number of parents in the district, and we're looking at ways that we can continue to expand our health offerings to be more robust and to meet the needs of students today, as well as to reflect changes in legislation and policy to provide a health education curriculum that's very comprehensive and that's research-based. We've had an initial meeting, enough to plan, and we are now looking at three dates to bring a community task force together. And I'm going to announce those dates simply because, to give a timeframe. I mean, if folks are interested, they can contact my office. We're looking at May 6, May 22, and June 10 for a series of three meetings. We're looking for parent, teacher, and community representatives. We do have a number of people that have expressed their interest so far, but we really want a diverse task force, so we can bring everybody together, in addition to district staff. And we're going to be vetting some curriculums, and that group will make a recommendation that will come before this committee this summer for hopeful implementation in the fall. So we've heard that there is a strong interest in this, and we believe that's something that would be very positive for our students. Next, I'd like to let you know that the middle school turnaround plan, turnaround planning team plans to present to this committee at next month's meeting. We'll have representatives from the Department of Education, the middle school leadership, our middle school principal, and associate principals are both here tonight, and they will be with us again next month, presenting on the turnaround plan. I can say that right now, we have 16, I believe, members of the turnaround plan team active in the middle school, these are faculty members who are actively involved in that. I've been at a number of those meetings, the work is positive, exciting, and very thoughtful and rigorous, and the folks that have been involved in that are making it a really worthwhile process. So there have been a lot of focus groups, talking with students, talking with parents, and we're really in a data collection and reflection phase. And this group is going to put together a very robust plan, and it will be presented to the state towards the end of the summer. So this group is going to continue their work, and they will present a little bit more about what that means and what that looks like at our next month's meeting. But I did want to let you know that that work has already begun. And the last thing that I'll touch on tonight is that this committee has discussed proposals for transportation, and we have sort of brought to you some suggestions for how we can actively reduce transportation costs. I have our transportation coordinator and our business manager here if there are questions, but tonight we're going to ask for your endorsement of a small pilot proposal of what we think could be a significant cost savings to the district. We are looking to bring back some of our contracted routes where we're paying contracted services, somebody out there to drive students to some of our placements in neighboring districts, and many of these are quite costly. And we believe that we have put forward a proposal for purchasing three vans where we can do this ourselves at a fraction of the cost. You have a memo in your packet that details this. And we would like to specifically begin with three vans purchased locally, and to begin to transport our own students for an immediate cost-saving proposal using existing already-approved capital money, as well as the out-of-district tuition line that's presently paying the contracts to transport these students at a higher rate to an outside vendor. at a higher rate to an outside vendor. If you'd like to ask questions, we can bring them forward as well.
So, did you have more, or did you want to come back to this?
I can touch on, there's a couple other things in the packet that I'd just like to go through and then maybe take questions on that?
Okay, that sounds good.
And then I have included, I won't read it all, because there's so much happening throughout the district. But I've highlighted some of the upcoming events. Of course, we do have April vacation, so I will mention that one. April 15th through 19th, of course, is April Vacation Week. Many of the school offices are closed throughout the district. On the 26th, Federal Street School has a tree planting ceremony. Also, that same night, Friday the 26th, the high school is showing the movie The Hate U Give. It's the book-to-movie club. This has been a really successful event so far. It's a free showing, it's in the auditorium, and it's a lovely, lovely event. So I hope people can come, and it's a great movie. And on May 9th, many of our schools, Federal Street, Newton, and the middle school are being recognized at the State House for the Healthy Start Award. And so that's an upcoming event that we're looking forward to. That's for recognition of our Breakfast in the Classroom program that has been a successful initiative at those three schools. And May 10th is our Film Fest and Art Show coming up. That is expanding from its traditional Film Fest to include an art show that is in the GHS Auditorium, and it is free at 6:00 PM. And I believe right now, the Town Council is scheduled to vote on our budget on May 29th. So I'll put that date on your calendar as well. You have your staffing report in your packet. And you do have a note about food service pricing. And I did want to advise you that we intend to keep school lunch prices the same for next year. We've looked ahead, not just next year, but the following year, and we believe that we can keep the cost steady for next school year with a modest adjustment the year following that. And so we do want to let families know that it is our intent not to increase school lunch prices for next year. And those prices are currently, they're listed here in your packet, so those would not change at this point. You have the financial reports in your packet that you always receive. I'm almost done. Then you have all of your school newsletters. Please take time to read them, they're wonderful. And last but not least, you have a local publication featuring our very own Greenfield High School. I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. I have a couple clarifying questions related to the lunch prices. At the very bottom, it says reduced 40 cents and milk 60 cents. Is that the, is 40 cents the cost of a reduced lunch or reduced milk?
Lunch, I think.
Reduced lunch, okay, thank you.
40 cents for reduced lunch? And reduced milk is 60 cents?
I believe reduced lunch is 40 cents, and milk, by itself, not reduced, is 60 cents.
All right, gotcha. Great, thank you. Thank you. Hey, no problem.
We need some Oxford commas, Steve.
A hard return.
And on page two of the Superintendent's Project Summary Report, Goals Report. Goal number three, it says, "Applied for DUCY grant funds to evaluate and plan for an impact study and/or analysis in the area of special education, including the determination of scope and priority within staffing." Could you talk to us a little bit about that grant application?
Sure, so as part of our turnaround work, we're working with the Department of Education to actively identify other grant sources that could complement our work in the middle school and also district-wide. So Matt and I have been working with the Collaborative on a proposal to do some in-depth analysis in two different areas. One is an area that we've identified that we want to do some more rigorous study in around English language learners, and another is in some special education programming. So in those two areas, we're looking at a professional development model that's a professional learning community. And we're using our relationship with the Collaborative to try to extend and really benefit our staff and students. And I should mention, we're also exploring another option that is, would be completely free to us, also through a grant through the department, which would allow a curriculum audit of our work here in Greenfield. Those are an example of the kinds of resources that are actually available to the district as part of our turnaround work, and are keys to unlocking some of the potential that we know we have right here, if we have the high-leverage resources to use them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Superintendent regarding anything that we just covered? Member Hollins?
I have two questions. First, I want to congratulate you on the new grant. Sounds terrific. I have a question. During the meetings we had with the Budget Subcommittee, we were aware of a lot of needs for the district and requests related to student mental health. And I was wondering if the award of this grant alleviated any of the needs we had for specific services that had come up during budget discussions?
No.
Okay.
To answer that more fully, they don't replace any existing staff. For example, they don't replace a school counselor or a school psychologist. But what they do do is allow us more time for professional development training and supports for existing staff and for collaboration. So, for example, somebody in a preschool might not talk much with a related service provider who's in a high school. So we can instead train teams across our district that can identify how to better provide supports to students. And those are some of the ways that we will be using this grant.
Thank you, so it's not new positions in the district?
That's correct.
Okay. And my second was whether or not you wanted a motion on the lunch presses staying the same in FY '20?
That would be fine if you, we don't need it. But if you want to affirm it, then we will have a vote that affirms school lunch prices staying the same.
So I'll move that in FY '20, school lunch prices will be the same as they are this year, no increase.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second, my member Exstrom. Any deliberation on that? I'll just say that I appreciate that we are keeping them the same. I think that, and I appreciate that we're bringing this forward now, because it's very important to let families know any changes in these costs. Any other comments, questions? Is that a hand, Member Exstrom?
Sorry.
No problem.
So, just following up on the grant.
Wait, 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 we have a motion on the table related to?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay, great, okay. Seeing no more comments on school lunch price, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, that is unanimous, thank you. Go ahead.
I was getting ahead of myself, as usual. So is this, was this a surprise grant? Or monies that we're receiving? Or is it, did we have to do some work and multiple things to make it happen? I'm just curious.
It's always a surprise, because we are always excited when we get it.
I'm excited about it.
And we can't count on it.
Yeah.
It's not an entitlement grant. Title I, for example, is one that we expect every year, we plan for it. And this is a competitive grant. So we were hopeful, we submitted a strong application, but we are always pleased to be able to deliver this. And yes, there's a lot of work that goes into it. And I did ask my grants manager to come here tonight, in part because we sat today as part of a different initiative and went through, I don't know, about a dozen grants that we have actively applied for and received. And when you look at any one of these individually, you know, it's one initiative. But when you look at them all together, it's actually quite impressive what network of resources we're pulling together for students. And this is why we talk about a behavioral health support system or safety net. And we're really doing a great job of putting that in place. And when we apply for grants, they're looking, do you have a plan for how to connect systems and resources across the district? And the feedback that we're getting is that that's part of why we're receiving these awards.
Thank you. Mayor Martin?
Yes, Superintendent. Could you help me out with the Health Education Task Force? When was it formed, who are the members, and the purpose?
It has not yet been formed. It is a plan to form one. So in the coming days and weeks, we are, we're announcing tonight that we would like people to contact us if they're interested. There has not been a meeting, there's been internally a planning meeting to determine what might we hope to accomplish, for example, and to evaluate some, what is available as curriculum out there. There was discussion by parents on the school committee email, and I believe at public comment, parents looking for and requesting it. It was one of the recent prompts for bringing it forward at this particular time. But really, educators are identifying that we need to take some more proactive steps to help our students have information that would be of service to them.
And it would expand further than the regular nursing and health clinics we have in the school?
So looking at health education would include a sex ed component at the middle school level in particular, would include physical education, would include positive choices, substance use prevention curriculum, which we have very active in our schools right now. And it's looking comprehensively at that whole topic to see how we can best deliver that information. So school nurses will be a part of that, the school physician would be a part of that, our health teachers would be a part of that, our PE teachers might be involved. But we're looking for parent voices and community organizations that might have expertise as well.
You note further down that there's, anticipate hiring a health services director or supervisor or manager using money from Bay State Hospital?
What we're doing is preparing a proposal that would be brought forward in the fall through the community develop, there's a name for it, C-Back Community Boarded, I'm forgetting the acronym.
Health Improvement Program?
Something like that. And we're working on a proposal that would request funding to support a health initiative, health manager position right here in the schools, in part to address the opioid addiction that we're seeing across the Commonwealth, and to support public health initiatives that we're doing right here in the school, to tie together all of these initiatives and to support our students in a way that we can't right now. So that's a proposal that we're working on developing.
You've got an update on the Greenfield Middle School Turnaround Plan? Is, are the PTOs involved, are the parents involved in that group?
Sure, I just left a community stakeholder meeting. Before we came here, a number of the folks in the room were there as well, where we invited parents in. There were members of the council there, there were parents, there were teachers. And we are actively getting the perspective of parents and the PTO and council members as well.
Is the selection of the middle school a specific site for a particular reason? Or is it planned to be, there are going to be turnaround plans at other sites?
So a turnaround plan is a designation from the Department of Education. And it has to do with your MCAS scores, your participation rate, your attendance rate, and the performance of particular groups and subgroups of children as their performance levels are rated by the Department of Education.
Thank you. During, just curious, I don't really know. During the April vacation, are administrative offices closed?
So school offices at the schools are closed, and that's why it's noted. The central office will be open, but there will be staff, individual staff members that may be out. But our offices are open.
Thank you.
So I do want to turn our attention to the pilot program to recapture out-of-district transportation costs. It's my understanding that you are looking for a vote of support for this.
Yeah.
This information came to us a little bit late. Pardon?
Can we discuss it? Not on the agenda.
It is. It's on the Superintendent's, I mean, it's on the, I was going to say the same thing.
It's in the Superintendent's report.
Could you turn your mic on?
It's not on the agenda, I'm wondering if we are able to discuss it.
Thank you, Member Ward. So my next question is, you know, is there an urgency that we would want to be voting on this tonight? My understanding is that it is in the Superintendent's report. We didn't get the information until today. If there's an urgency, if there's a need to address this today, it's my understanding that we can. So I'm deferring to you, is this something that can wait?
In answer to that, could I let the business man, it's on here as an update, whether the committee decides to vote tonight or not?
The other, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, I'd like to provide an update to the committee. We do right now have funds approved that are for the purpose of purchasing through capital for in-district transportation. So we are, we're bringing it to the committee as part of a voted request of the committee to explore this, and we are coming back with additional information. I recognize that the materials that I received, that were submitted to the committee today, with a note that we submitted them as soon as possible based on developing this plan, you know, as it's been developed.
So I was also going to say, and I appreciate you mentioning it, that the committee has already supported this change. But I'm seeing, did you have your hand up just now?
No.
Okay. Did you?
Yes, I'm just confused that it's coming up as a discussion topic when it's not on the agenda. And it was so important that we had to have two special meetings about something we talked about that wasn't on the agenda. It doesn't even say on the agenda that we can talk about things that aren't on the agenda if they're pertinent, so, and it is, yeah, so I think it's a terrific idea and agenda item, but it's not on our agenda for tonight.
So this was brought to us as an update through the Superintendent's report. And I think it's fine for us to keep this information as an update if there's nothing, if there's not an urgent need for us to vote. Right? I'm looking at, yeah.
I'll talk.
I mean.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I mean, this came to us.
Can we continue to speak to it? It's not on the agenda. I'm just, I'm concerned about moving forward with it.
Can I?
Yes, Superintendent.
So the agenda right now says Superintendent's report, and for the last 20 minutes or whatever, we've been talking, we've been talking about the Superintendent's report. So we're addressing an item that's on the agenda, and I appreciate your point. And we are on the agenda.
Oh, Mayor Martin?
Yeah, I think for voting purposes, this doesn't qualify as an emergency. For instance, the $70,000 has been around for four or five years. The savings discussion in transportation is at least a couple of years. So the proposal to save $350,000 soon is just a great idea. So let's do it as soon as possible. But I think it needs a, it needs some detailed conversation and should be referred to the Subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee.
Yes, Superintendent.
It has come to the Budget Subcommittee, and I would really appreciate if they could give you an update, whether or not you want to take a vote. I'd like to at least provide you an update and let them speak to the proposal. And then you can decide whether the committee wants to take any action or not.
I think that as an information point, as part of the Superintendent's report, we can receive information, and there's not a need for a vote tonight.
Okay.
So.
I will give information.
Yes, information.
So, much to your wanting to do, and I believe the mayor had an article saying, "Think outside the box, try to come up with ways to save money." So this is a way to do that. What we're proposing to do is to purchase three Honda Odyssey Mini Vans locally from Lundgren Honda. And what we would like to do is to bring in about eight out-of-district students that we transport to Holyoke every single day. The cost to transport these eight students to Holyoke is $354,640 per year. That comes to about $1,612 per day to transport these kids to Holyoke. We do have $70,000 in a capital account earmarked to purchase vehicles for student transportation, as well as an expected savings with this program. A driver and a monitor for these three vans is about $600 per day. So as soon as we could do this, we could begin saving $1,000 per day in transporting these kids from Greenfield to Holyoke every single day. In addition, and this is the real bonus to this program, is that we've identified about three to five students from surrounding districts who would want to take advantage of this program, and we would charge them between $125, $130,000. of this program, and we would charge them between $125, $130 a day, which is a potential of about $27,000, $28,000 a year to transport these kids. So, you know, and I understand the fact that you want to follow protocol and as well as what's on the agenda, but I would ask that if, that we could do this as soon as possible, because in effect, the more we wait, the more savings that we're not getting.
And I'd like to add, I would like to add one thing. I've been working on an aging report for our present fleet that we're using right now. And we're past aging. Most of, about 90% of our vehicles have 100,000 plus. And as the director right now, I'm saying we could have a burp any minute and fall backwards real fast without any replacement. We need to keep going forward, we need to keep transporting the students, we need to do it in a safer way than we're doing it right now. And this is one of the ways that we can get that accomplished pretty quickly. But I got to remind you, the aging is past, we're keeping it together thanks to DPW and their maintenance, but we're 128,000, 112,000, and that's what our kids are riding in. It could be a stop, a screeching halt any minute. And that's what I'm up against.
Okay. I see Member Karen, then Member Hans.
I guess I'm going back to the need to wait to vote, because often when we have our subcommittee reports, something comes up, we make a recommendation, and we make a vote then, even though it's not listed specifically on the agenda. So, I'm not sure why this would be different. It's a question, I don't know all of the rules. It seems to me that this would be fair to do tonight, because that does happen. I've made those recommendations myself under subcommittee for health and safety. We voted them that night without any specific listing, so it seems appropriate, but I will defer.
Are you referring to the school lunch vote we just took?
Yeah, that, or, you know, the, when we've asked the health and safety subcommittee to look into the bus route. I can't think of a good example off the top of my head, but we've made votes that weren't specifically listed before. I don't, maybe we were doing it wrong before, but past practice says it's okay.
Number Hans.
Do we have to go out to bid on vehicle purchase at this level of expense?
Actually, no. Under 30B special ed, as well as special ed transportation, is exempt, specifically exempt in the, in the, in the law. So, for example, if we went out and bought $1 million worth of transportation, it would not have to be bid. Likewise, we are buying vehicles specifically for special ed transportation, therefore it does not have to be bid.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments for superintendent, Steve, related to anything in the superintendent's report, the financial reports, anything? Mayor?
Is the chair going to refer this to the budget subcommittee?
I believe that the budget subcommittee has already reviewed the plan for this. I think that these are more specific details, but there was discussion on utilizing or making changes to our transportation for out of district special education that was discussed through the budget conversation. Would you, I mean, so, if you want to, put the motion forward.
It's the chair's prerogative to move, to move initiatives. I don't think a member can do that, but let me ask, we did have a very brief discussion, the discussion was extremely superficial and dealt with, we can save some money if we make some transportation changes. So, I think, I think the whole idea here is wonderful, obviously, but the, I think it needs a discussion.
Sure. Let's refer this to the budget subcommittee. I think there's a meeting coming up in a couple of days. Is there time to add it to the agenda?
There has not been a meeting called yet for the date that was previously set over the school vacation week.
Okay, so, but we do anticipate a meeting soon. Any opposition to referring to subcommittee? Okay, great. So, it looks like we have consensus to do that.
Bring it back at the next meeting.
Uh huh. Thank you. Subcommittees, who would like to go first?
I'd just have.
Yes, Mayor Martin.
Add one last question on the staffing report and the superintendent's report.
Sure.
Superintendent, are we replacing any of the positions that you note to be accepted higher salaried position? Is the position being vacated, or is it the same position with a higher salary?
The staffing report that you have in front of you usually indicates when we've replaced somebody, but because these, in some cases, these are recent notice that somebody has moved to another district where they've accepted a higher salary. So, we've just provided the update that we have. So, these are current vacancies where we, or we anticipate somebody has given us notice that they plan to move, and so we've posted the position. So, we will be filling these positions because they're critical need.
And just on that teaching overseas, is there any obligation we have to hold that position in the future?
In this particular instance, not that I'm aware of.
No, thank you.
Any further questions on the superintendent's report? Subcommittee's, Member Ward, would you like to comment, fill us in on budget subcommittee activity?
No.
Okay. Would anyone else from the budget subcommittee like to fill us in on any potential activity? And let's see, the policies subcommittee, Member Karen.
We met, gosh, it was already last week, and reviewed, continued our work, we've been doing great work, plowing through it, making necessary changes, really taking time to evaluate why we should change, what should be changed, comparing current law to the most accurate information we're getting from the MASC. We have some stuff to present tonight, so I think it's going forward. Unfortunately, we did not get to discussing the website information. It's coming up on our next agenda, which has tentatively been set for the first week of May. Might as well do health safety, we didn't meet, so, there's nothing to say.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you. And negotiations and personnel did not meet, right? Okay, great. School committee representatives, Member Hollins, would you like to tell us about planning and construction?
Yes. There was a meeting in March, and the two things I think that were interesting was going over the mayor's proposed capital budget recommendations. And I just want to mention that there was a multi-page document that accompanied the report about what was being recommended for capital. And so, in some cases, for the school district, it explained, for example, we had requested two elevators, replacing both elevators at Federal Street School. And in the detail, it said one would be recommended for purchase this year, and one would be recommended for purchase next year. So, when it's on our agenda to discuss that, you should have the information on what was and what wasn't proposed, and in some cases, things were recommended to another year. And there's also a long discussion on an anaerobic digester, which in itself may not sound interesting. But what was interesting about it was the increased cost to the city of disposing of waste, sewer waste, and how few options there are for the city to transport the waste. And because there's so few options, the cost to the city is doubling. And what's interesting about the discussion is that you get to see what the tension is about money, you know, to get rid of sewer waste. I don't remember the exact number, but in one year, it goes from like 230,000 to the next year, 450,000. And there's a plan to develop the resources in Greenfield that other communities in like circumstances can actually take advantage of. So, it's pretty forward-thinking and interesting, but it does show all the tensions for funding. But that was it.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any questions from Member Hollins? Okay. And Member Ekstrom, could you please fill us in on the collaborative for educational services?
So, towards the end of March or early April, we had a meeting, we have a meeting every two to three months. And this meeting actually had a focus around sort of alternative education and the schools that the collaborative has in Holyoke. And it was interesting in context with this, what we're talking about doing with the Green River School. There was also discussion about pioneers starting of alternative school, or alternative programs within their school district. And so, I think it's, it's something that we should think very intentionally about and how it is that we would like to see it run, as well as what our best interests would be.
Yes, Superintendent.
I also just want to note, we reached out to the collaborative, and there are minutes in your packet as well.
Thank you. Those are minutes from the January meeting. Yeah, and when the new minutes are out, we'll send them around. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
There, that was really the focus of the entire meeting. We also discussed the executive director's evaluation, which is something that we discuss at every meeting, and that kind of closed out the topics.
Thanks, Member Ekstrom. I happened to be at that meeting, it was in town, and so I stopped in for a little portion of it. And I was really fascinated by the evaluation and the evaluation tool and the process that the collaborative is using. It's slightly different than the DUCI process for superintendents, and it seemed to be very promising in providing really great constructive feedback for their executive director, and also tap into opinions and input from a lot of different stakeholders. So, I'm really interested in seeing how that process kind of continues on. Did you, I have a question for you, I was just saying.
I actually, you know, now that you have been speaking some more, it's, there are a couple of things that they have done over the past year, one of which is an organizational or a reorganization. And it's proving to be really assistive to them and in how the organization is run overall. It's become much more efficient from what I can see. And they have also started using Salesforce, which has been helping them attract their budgets and income and expenses and things like that, in addition to sort of your standard software you would use related to budgets and things like that. So, they really are very forward-thinking in how they see their business, and some of that is just by virtue of not being tied to regulations and things like that. They, the business itself is run sort of parallel to how a school district would run, but they also sort of have the availability to think outside the box and do what's best for the, for the business, as well as what's best for the community and the people that they're assisting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mayor Martin?
Member Ekstrom, were there any discussions on the cost per student? So, the hack or the group has different private schools?
You know, I don't recall, but I can absolutely go over my notes and everything that I have. But the, the alternative school, they have students from Chutesbury, Amherst, sort of a number of places, and these were kids that would typically have been dropouts. And they have really done quite a bit to help the kid turn around and focus on what their best style of learning is, and experiential learning, as opposed to sitting in a classroom and writing notes and all of those things. So, not only is it beneficial to each of the school districts, because the intent is that the student would return, but they don't have to return if they're successful with that model. And so, they work pretty closely with the district from what I could see, and it's just, it really is turning into something that I think we should really think about.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the collaborative? Okay. So, seeing none, we'll move on to our first business item. 7:35, doing okay. So, as you all know, we are here today to fill a vacant school committee seat. And at our last meeting, the committee voted to receive letters of interest from the community until the end of the day on April 1st. We received four letters of interest, and all of those letters, and, and if some of them had resumes attached to, those were forwarded to the committee, and they're here in your I've only done this once before, and I'm not sure that there's a real kind of script for it. But my suggestion for moving forward is to have the individual candidates come up and follow through with what we voted on, which was to have the opportunity for a two-minute statement, and then a little bit of time for Q and A from committee members. And I would like to suggest that we follow the model that we follow for our interviews, for say, business manager, director of people's services, where we ask the same question to each of our candidates. And I think that we should be limiting our questions to no more than two, and this is mainly because of time. Is there any discussion on that? Does that feel good to the group? I'm kind of seeing some yeses. Member Hollins, does that feel equitable? Okay. And with that in mind, I do think it best that those that are applying for this position that are not speaking to us step out into the hallway. So, I'm going to start with Mr. Selwyn, because he's just first on our list, and ask that Ms. Wall, Ms. Garrus, and Mr. Johnson to step out into the hallway. Thank you very much. Member Ekstrom, can you help with the two-minute timer? Super. Okay. Everybody excited? Okay. So, Mr. Selwyn, thank you for joining us. We received your letter and your resume, and that is in your packet, everyone should have it. I don't have much more to say, so I will yield the floor to you if you want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself, or whatever you prepared for your two minutes. And Member Ekstrom will start the timer.
Okay. I'm still Doug Zilwin, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. These are hard times for schools, more and more pressure to do more with less, as you know all too well. And that intense pressure, in my view, moves us away sometimes from, from focusing on what's good for children, what's good for the educators in the system and for the communities. Focusing on what is good for children and educators is sadly moving against the current that we see across the country, not just in Greenfield. But it seems to me an incredibly important role to play and a role that the school board, our school committee can play in supporting teachers to do what is best for kids in the classroom. Many decisions these days are made based on fear, fear of punishment, fear of takeovers, fear of poor test scores, and to deal with one crisis after another. And what I would hope to be able to do on the school committee is to help to focus and keep the focus first on what is good for children, what will help them to be healthy, able learners, to start there, and to bring that question to every decision that the committee considers. First, is it good for children? Is it good for the school, school workers? Will it make the system stronger? And then to figure out how to make that happen, rather than to focus on what we don't have and what we can't do. What are our assets? How might we work with others in the community to make things we want to have happen, happen? I'm not approaching this naively. I know that some of what I hope to do will meet with the reality of what is actually possible, and I'll be frustrated in many of possible, and I'll be frustrated in many of the same ways, I think, many of you are, when you want to do more for the schools. But I'm hoping I can offer some energy and experience to the committee in aiming for what is best for students. I've been in education since 1985 as a teacher, parent, university professor, consultant, and writer, and I've been a social worker and crisis counselor, which might also have some value here as well. And I know that schools-
Ten seconds.
How long?
Ten seconds.
Well, golly. I was just getting to the good stuff. Now I only have nine seconds. I know there's a steep learning curve, but I now have the time and energy to put my full focus on getting up to speed into learning how the committee works so I can serve usefully. I guess that would be my two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mayor Martin, would you like to start us off?
Sure, Mr. Selwyn.
Yes.
Let me first thank you for applying. I think you were applied before the gavel had hit the table, so I appreciate your concentration. But I also appreciate your involvement. You've been before several school committee meetings, and you've been on the other side of the camera, so always taking in what's going on. My first question is, what do you see as the greatest weakness of the school committee?
Hmm. Well, I have to couch my answer in starting with ignorance, which is to say, since I don't see what happens when you all meet, and I can't say from the inside the way you interact, it's hard to know. Okay? I can see what it looks like from the outside. And to answer that, it's one, dealing with, well, let's see. Is this a weakness of the school committee? I think it's a weakness of the structure of education in the state, maybe in the country, which is, number one, you have not enough resources to do what you want to do, which means that you have to make a lot of crisis decisions, rather than to be able to step back and say, what is good for the students? What is good for education? So the inability to ask the more fundamental questions of what should we be doing, but instead focusing on what do we need to do next, I think limits the way that, it makes it hard for things to change. And I think one of the roles of the school board or a school committee is to not simply deal with crisis, but to set an agenda that helps to change things. And so rather than deal with the same problem over and over again, to move in a more positive direction, and I think it's been difficult for this group to do that, and for school committees or boards across the country to do that because of that, the crisis in front.
Thank you. You authored a My Turn or a Letter to the Editor several months ago regarding the, you viewed the school committee should not have the mayor on the committee because the mayor makes a budget decision and also is involved in the budget.
Let me, let me just stop you. That's not what I said. What I said is I didn't think the mayor should be-
Mayor Martin?
Should probably be-
There's a point of order that, to everybody.
Well, there's going to be individual questions for each person. They're not all the same.
So at this, no, that was what we had, we had consensus that we were going to ask everyone the same question.
So let me say-
Though I can talk to you later about it.
The Charter calls for the mayor to be an elected member of the school committee. So I guess my point is, and when you just mentioned involvement in changing the structure on a regional and national level, how would you determine the mayor's participation in budget discussions on the school committee when the Charter demands that the mayor be there?
Okay. What I said in the letter was, I didn't think that the mayor should be on the budget subcommittee. Not, it had not, I didn't deal with whether the mayor should be on the, on the school committee as a whole. I just said, and I made it clear, it wasn't about you, but it was about the idea that a mayor on the budget committee is, in a sense, negotiating with himself or herself because the budget committee makes the recommendations, the school committee makes the recommendations, and then sends them to the mayor, who pushes back, and you're talking to yourself that way. And it seems to me that the mayor on the school committee is, I'm not questioning that, but I don't think the mayor should be in the position of negotiating with himself or herself. So whether I was allowed to answer that or not, I'm not sure, but I did.
Fine for me, but we can talk about it later.
Okay.
Member Hollins?
Mr. Selwyn, I enjoyed reading your resume, which wasn't required, but I really appreciated that you were doing a lot of integrating the arts and social studies curriculum, something that I've enjoyed myself. My question has to do with how, what resource you feel you would bring to the committee in terms of our struggle with finance.
With finance?
Yes, with budgeting and finance. Could I just continue?
Sure.
The school committee doesn't have a role in day-to-day administration, so our focus is policy for governing the school district, sometimes setting priorities and largely establishing budget and funding.
Well, I think any budget is really a statement of values. I mean, it says, this is what we value, and so this is how we are going to allocate our resources as much as possible. And so, I mean, I certainly understand that there are limits to what we can do, but understanding first, here's what we value most, and so we're going to put every effort we can into realizing what we have put out as our values, I think is an important starting place. So rather than focusing on, okay, how do we cut, which is what I see happening every year for the budget committee, is, okay, which finger do we chop this time? We don't have enough to do what we'd like to do, so how do we cut? Instead, starting with what do we really want? And how can we organize the assets we have, both within the school district and within the community, to get as close to what we value as possible? I think that approach, to me, makes, shifts things a little bit. It shifts, it moves off of a defensive posture and towards a more positive, how can we move towards what we want, rather than simply survive? So taking that orientation, I think, is a step. I would hope to make connection with other institutions within town to see what's possible in terms of making use of shared services, or to recognize maybe there are other ways to go about doing things than what we do now. It takes, again, it takes, it takes taking a step back and saying, what do we value? What do we want? How else can we go about doing this, rather than simply saying, okay, what are we going to lose this time? You know, I was thrilled to hear about the grant that you got, which, you know, as I, is my bang-up ending that I didn't get to, was talking about, you know, the need to really focus on whole children, right, on serving them academically, but also emotionally and in every other way. I mean, I think looking at if that's our goal, and if what we want to do is support our classrooms to do that, how can we put as much resource as possible into that direction? And if we're going to have to skimp somewhere, can we skimp in ways that move it away from the classroom? I know that's what you try to do every year, so I'm not inventing the wheel here, but I think my focus would be to move in that direction. I can't make money appear out of the air. I wish I could.
Thank you. Thanks for applying.
Member Karen?
I don't have any specific questions that they actually haven't already asked, so.
Okay, thank you. From your vantage point, how should the committee and district focus their energy for the next seven months?
Well, seven months, eh?
Well, I mean, I asked for the seven months because that's the end of the term. That's the seat that you're filling. And I would actually just perhaps amend my question to, limit it to, how should the committee focus its energy for the next seven months?
Well, to be honest with you, I think it would be presumptuous for me to say anything about that, because I don't know what, I can't, I can't know what it is you've already had conversations about doing, et cetera. So, I mean, it would be, to me, it would constantly be focusing on what's good for kids, and so having those conversations. If we, one of the sort of mysteries to me of public education at this point is the way we have entirely, we have, we hear time and time again from the state that we have to do data-driven decision-making, and yet the state regularly ignores the data they get, which shows that hyper-focus on testing is not educationally sound, that it hurts kids, that many of the ways in which we tie ourselves in knots trying to do what's been handed to us actually work against the health and well-being of the kids. So I would hope that every conversation would start with what's good for kids? What are we doing that's good for kids? What are we doing that maybe we could do better for kids? Who are we not serving well? How do we gather information that would help us to know which students are not being well-served right now? And how can we support what's going on? And I understand that the committee doesn't do day-to-day, but helping to gather the information and support teachers to better support the children who are not being well-served. And that could mean not academically well-served, or who don't feel safe, or who do not feel like they are getting what they need. Are there ways we can support families to support the kids? I mean, I think asking those questions, I don't know where it would lead, because I don't know, number one, what you've already done. I don't know what information would come in, but I think gathering those, that information, if you don't already have it, to guide, to guide the choices that the committee would make, that's where I would advocate focusing.
Thank you. And I have one more. What about the Greenfield Public Schools makes you most proud and excited?
Well, the fact that I think there are a lot of caring people involved in the operation that, you know, from what I've, what I've seen, and I haven't seen so much, but from what I've seen, there's, there's a lot of energy on the part of the, of the teachers and, and community in terms of doing really good, caring work to support children. And I think, and this is an overused term, I think, but in many ways heroic work, because I think people who are looking to serve the whole child are working against what feels to me like a nationwide attack on public schools and that kind of behavior. So, so I think people who are really looking to serve kids, and I see a lot of that happening here, I think that's great. And so I'm happy, happy that that's happening and want to support it, whether I end up on the committee or not.
Thank you. Member Ekstrom?
Hi.
I live there.
So I guess my real question, or real question, my question is, why would you want to do this? I mean, and I say that in the most general sense of terms, because I, you know, when I decided to run and work with, on the school committee, and it was very sort of selfishly driven. I wanted to ensure that the children in our district get the best education possible, but certainly, I think everyone can attest, that my focus is ensuring special education is doing the things it needs to do. And that hasn't changed with my being here, and that continues to be my focus. And I'm just curious, because that sort of is what drove me to harass everyone on this panel all the time.
Well, it's a good question. In some ways, I sort of trapped myself into it. I recently, well, wrote a book, but focusing on what would our communities and schools look like if we focused primarily or first on the health and well-being of the kids? And part of what I looked at there was the connection between the schools and communities and recognizing that we're all kind of one entity, in a sense, that schools are artifacts of the community, and that one of the things that would make life better would be more community involvement with the schools. And I thought, well, I guess if I'm advocating for people to get more involved in the schools, and then I don't do that, that would be kind of hypocritical. And I think I have given my skill or skills and/or experience in terms of being around schools for a very long time. I think there have been 10 years of my life where I haven't been in school, one way or another, either as a student or as somebody on the other side of the desk, that I have a lot of experience. I actually taught in the pre-no-child-left-behind days, and have some sense of what a classroom can look like when it's not operating out of fear. And I think I bring that experience. My experience as a social worker and counselor and working with groups and such, seems to me that that might be useful as being part of a group to bring. My wife says I should tell you that I actually went to clown school. Whether that's useful or not, I don't know, but just saying. And, well, you should know what you'd be getting. And I have a sense that it would be a way to contribute, and so I would hope to be able to contribute something to what I've spent much of my life involved with.
Thank you. Is there, you're good? Member Ward, no questions? Okay. All right. Yes, yes.
I would just like to thank Doug for his, for several years, he's been participating in the Traut in the Classroom Program. He's been a member of the School Council at Greenfield Middle School. He was in attendance today at the community meeting, stakeholder meeting, as part of the turnaround plan that I spoke about, and a member of Green and Greenfield and volunteer here at GCTV, making these meetings possible. And I say this as a way of saying, there's a lot of people doing things out in the community that are really important to our schools, and even, you know, in a small way, if you have an hour and you do something, we really notice and appreciate it. And so when somebody has put in time over the years, we do really appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug, for coming.
Who do I send in next?
Who is next? Ms. Jean Wall, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So as you all can tell, I seriously misjudged the timing on this, but I am paying attention, and thank you, everyone, for keeping things moving along.
I'll just, no. Let me just go get my nest.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for applying. I forgot what I said before everybody left the room. So in case I didn't say this before, you all have two minutes to make your statement, and then we'll go around and ask you some questions. They'll be the same questions that we asked Mr. Selwyn, so we're asking some questions of everyone. Yeah, so that's that. And Member Ekstrom will start the timer.
Hi, I'm Jean Wall, and I live at 40 High Street. And I feel that the schools in Greenfield are the most important aspect of our city's governance, and that's illustrated by the new proposed city budget. The total proposed operating budget for next year is $51 million, and $31 million of that budget is being allocated toward the schools. This is a tremendous burden for all our residents who complain about the property tax rate in Greenfield, yet we all want our schools to be outstanding, and few question this allotment. As a citizen who has spent the last 12 years serving on various committees overseeing governance and budgeting from the City Hall aspect, I felt that I should step up and act as a bridge between the city and the schools. I can be helpful by understanding and representing the schools with capital budget, capital request needs, and striving to assist all to understand budget requests and facility needs, both for the city and for the schools. I do have a track record of concern for the future of Greenfield and an understanding of the needs for both schools and libraries, and for the need for fiscal responsibility on all fronts. I think that with transparency, understanding, and collaboration, the entire city can work together toward a school system that other communities will aspire- that other communities will aspire to emulate. And the expensive school choice problem will no longer be a problem for our schools, because all students will want to go to Greenfield schools. Superb schools create a thriving community for all and bring both business and new citizens to the area.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. I was just about to say 10 seconds. Thank you. So, we started with Mayor Martin, so we'll do that again. Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Ms. Wall, for applying and coming before the committee this evening. Your longstanding presence on a number of boards in Greenfield is recognized, and thank you for that. My first question is going to parallel my first question with the previous candidate. The... How do you... What do you see as the greatest weakness of the school committee today?
The lack of transparency for the community. We don't know what you need. We don't know where the money goes. We don't know anything about it. I don't even think people realize what a huge portion of the budget goes toward the schools.
And that is true. There are... I think that's even mentioned in our budget book. My next question is... How do I make this for everybody? What do you think about the mayor being on the school committee? It's mandated by the charter. Would you think the mayor should be on the committee or should be off the committee?
Or something in between.
Well, actually, the mayor is in charge of the budget for the entire town. And what we need to do is have the budgeting process all work together so that everybody benefits from the amount of money that's spent in the town, and we aren't fighting with each other over every little thing. And I think that the mayor can make that all come together versus being an impediment.
Thank you.
Member Hollins?
Thank you for applying. The question I asked had to do with what you feel you could bring to the school committee in terms of budget and finance. And what I said as a preface before is that the school committee isn't really involved in day-to-day administrative operation of the school. Our role is more governance through policy and working on budget, establishing some priorities perhaps. But clearly, one of our big issues is finance. And what would... What do you see you would bring if you were on the school committee? I think Member Nunez clarified initially, this is a seven-month term.
Well, I think that I have worked with the superintendent on the capital improvements needs for the school and helped her and the others on the committee understand how that fits into the whole city and what their needs are and who has to give and who has to be more vocal in demanding what they need. And I just think I have that experience that maybe others don't have.
Member Hollins, did you have a second question?
No, I didn't.
Thank you. And Member Karen, no questions. I have two. From your vantage point, how should the committee focus its energy for the next seven months? And I ask about the seven months simply because that's essentially approximately the duration of your term.
Well, the first thing you've got to do is get through this budget process and figure out what you're going to do with more or less money than you wanted. So, that's probably going to be the biggest thing. And then, the next focus task... Focus needs to be getting ready to figure out what you need for the next year, because this budgeting process is an ongoing thing. It never stops.
Thank you. And what about the Greenfield Public Schools are you most proud and excited about?
I think that the fact that we've gotten all the buildings fixed, we've got a building where alternative education thing... I mean, I just think that the whole school system is headed in the right direction with a lot of excitement. And I would like to just help build onto that excitement.
Thank you. Member Exum?
My question's pretty straightforward. What has inspired you to be here?
To run.
Sorry, for the record, I believe what I said before was, why do you want to do this? I don't know. So, and I will make my same speech. I'm here because I was inspired by a desire for students to get the best education possible, specifically to ensure that special education sort of moves forward and provided the best education possible. And so, I'm just curious, what sort of inspired you to do this?
Because I recognize the fact that if we have the best schools in the area, people will want to live in Greenfield. It will make the tax burden less on all of the people. It will get rid of this expensive school choice thing where all the kids are choosing to go outside. That costs us an exorbitant amount of money. And I would just like to get the town excited about how great the schools are in seven months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, Superintendent?
I would just like to thank Ms. Wall here for your service on a number of committees, for your championing of causes that you believe in here in Greenfield, and for working with me together and the other departments on capital. Thank you. Thank you for your interest in serving on the committee.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Hey, Cam, could you send in Ms. Garris? Hello, welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for sending in your letter of interest and resume. So, you'll have two minutes to speak. Member Exum will time... Will set the timer. And then, a majority of us have some questions for you. And that's really about it. So, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
So, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you all this evening. Having reviewed several of your guiding documents, objectives, and responsibility, I wanted to share with you some of my background, which I believe could be helpful in this tough decision you have to make this evening. My education and experience is in organizational management, and I think that's important to be aware of. I have created small and large budgets, created, reviewed, and implemented policies, and I have a pretty comprehensive understanding of open meeting laws. The history of my career focuses primarily on program development and oversight, where the funders were typically state and federal sources. Having a vast background in human and social services, I have seen firsthand the struggles that families face, and I am acutely aware how those struggles and issues follow students to the schools and create incredible challenges and opportunities for teachers and administrators. Other areas I have skilled understanding in includes procurement practices, cooperative purchasing, grant writing and research, contract negotiations, and public relations. In addition to my education and skills, my work in volunteer history might demonstrate to you my passion for helping people and being involved in my community. Being a product of Western Massachusetts Public Schools and having a child entering kindergarten this fall, I see this as a wonderful opportunity to expand my community service in a way that could be effective and meaningful. You have four remarkable candidates in front of you this evening, which will no doubt bring a myriad of useful strengths to the work you do. As a person of interest tonight, I hope you will consider my desire to join you in your mission to meet the challenges of this rapidly changing and diverse world. As the parent of a child entering one of your schools this fall, I have 100% confidence that even if I'm not chosen to fill this seat, that the community will still be extremely well-served. Thank you for your time, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. So, we'll start with Mayor Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Garris, for applying and being for this committee tonight. Just quickly, I'm looking at the resume, and you're with the Collaborative for Educational Services?
That's correct.
That's right. And does that group have a... Does that group have a contract with Greenfield Public Schools?
So, we...
Phil, is this the same question that you asked the other candidates?
Not yet.
So, we did agree to ask the same questions of all candidates.
Yeah, and I've gone off the rail a couple times.
I've heard that once or twice about you.
So, I guess my main question, so I think we do have, but I wasn't sure of the Collaborative for Educational Services, or we had a contract with another group.
So, maybe I can answer your questions and just make a comment. Certainly, all of the districts do work with the collaborative. Our mission is to serve the districts. I will say that we have employees on staff that serve on other school committees. So, if you're worried about it being a conflict of interest, that's not the case.
Thank you. My question is, what is the greatest weakness you see of this school committee?
I don't know that I'm in a position to answer that question. I am aware of the work you do. I have not actually sat down and evaluated to a point where I think I could say, this is your greatest weakness. If I'm being candid, I think there's some obvious tension. And I think when you have tension on a committee, that can impede the work you're doing. So, just, you know, first view, first glance, my observations tonight, that would be probably the best I could answer that question.
Thank you. The charter calls... The city charter calls for the mayor to be a member of the school committee. How do you feel about the mayor being on the school committee? And what challenges would you see that encompassing as a member?
I support the charter. I think having the mayor being on this committee is important, specifically because of the work the mayor does towards the budget and his involvement or her involvement with the council. I think having that representation here is also important. It connects some dots. It links everybody together, so I support that. I think it can also be a challenge. I think whoever is in the position of a mayor is a very difficult job. So, I think, you know, while the school committee, I wouldn't say operates in a silo, we're very focused on our budget and our work. And you are looking at maybe a little bit of the bigger picture for the city. And I think that can present a challenge for the school committee. But I think it's important to have that perspective here as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Hollins?
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for applying. My question had to do with the school committee's role in finance, developing budget. And I think Chairman Nunez has mentioned that the term you're applying for is a seven-month term. And my question is, given that the school committee's primary role is in governing through policy and developing a budget, advocating a budget, what do you think you would bring to the school committee that could assist us in our budgeting, finance, which is on the table right now for us?
I think when you sort of come in mid-cycle, if you will, you bring a fresh set of eyes, and it's a unique perspective. Someone coming into this role at this point, you know, this may be the first time they're looking at these numbers. I've looked at them, not as closely. If I was a member, I would be looking at them a bit more closely. I think having someone who hasn't been involved in the process from the beginning can sometimes bring a fresh perspective. Or they might come in and agree with everything you've already done. So, I think it's an opportunity to bring a fresh perspective mid-cycle like this. It could contribute. It could also contribute nothing. You're welcome. Thank you.
So, from your vantage point, how should the committee focus its energy for the next seven months?
I think specifically, obviously, your focus should be the budget right now. Outside of that, when I look at our community as a whole and really the role of the committee and your objectives to really provide guidance and feedback and work with the superintendent, I would look to the superintendent to help give us that focus. So, I don't want to say that I'm in a position right now to really say what that focus should be. As someone who's involved in this community and with my perspective, I think we need to focus not only on the budget, but something that was actually talked about earlier, transportation, special education costs are hitting not just this district, but every district hard. So, however we can work on reducing those costs or advising the superintendent in a way that will result in that, I think is really important. And then, I also hope that this committee really focuses on supporting the district and meeting students and families where they're at. You know, kids and families are coming into the schools with challenges unlike anything I knew as a kid, and those challenges are changing every day with social media and socioeconomic issues. So, I would really hope that we are focusing and supporting the superintendent in her work on those matters.
Thank you. And what about the Greenfield Public Schools are you most proud and excited about?
Wow. I think tonight, having those middle school students and high school students are just a perfect example of something I'm really proud about in this community, and that's giving our young people a voice and instilling confidence in them as well as making sure we're involving them in the process. And I witnessed that tonight, and I'm extremely proud of that for our community.
Thank you. Member Exum?
Why do you want to do this? Well, partially, I'm probably a little crazy. I have always loved being involved in my community, and I've done that in many different ways. And just about five years ago, when I decided to have a family, I sort of pulled out of my community involvement to focus just on family and career and all those things. And over the last year, I've been in a place where I'm feeling more comfortable, like I want to get back involved. And the interests I had five years ago, 10 years ago, are changing now that I have a family. And I've also changed communities. I was born and raised in North Hampton, lived in Brattleboro for a while, and now I'm here. And when I think about where my skills can be best used, I feel like that matches the objectives of the school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Do you want me to exit back out, or is it okay to stay in the room now?
I think it's okay to stay in the room. However, if you wouldn't mind just grabbing Mr. Johnson, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. Yeah, they can all come in if... Yeah. No? Thank you. Hello. So just to recap, you'll have two minutes to make a statement, and then the majority of us have a few questions for you, and we'll just go from there. So Member Exstrom's going to keep the time, and you can get started when you're ready.
Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight, inviting me to interview, and thank you so much for your service on the school committee and the tremendous work that you do for our schools. I also want to thank the youth leaders who came today and presented. I was really impressed with their ability to come and speak in front of a group of adults, and we can be more intimidating, I think, sometimes than we know. And I feel like that's really kind of part of why I think it's so important, the work that is done here, and why I want to be a part of it. We really need youth leadership right now, maybe more than ever. I think humanity is really being faced with some existential threats in the next period. Climate change in the next 12 years, we'll be seeing whether it's going to be catastrophic or apocalyptic. And youth are really playing a role, a leading role, right now in trying to get us to make the changes we need to make. And we need to prepare them for climate change, for automation, and artificial intelligence, and all these big challenges which our species is going to be facing. And I do think every school district needs to be thinking in those terms. I think I bring certain content experience to the table in terms of having worked in youth substance use prevention with the communities, the Care Coalition, the North Hampton Prevention Coalition, and the Holyoke Youth Task Force, and having had the opportunity to work on the production team at WGBH Educational Foundation, working on PBS Learning Media, creating electronic educational resources for public schools. And also currently, I work for the Interaction Institute for Social Change, which is a group... So we are experts at group process, and I hope to bring some of that knowledge and experience to this group as well.
Thank you. Mayor Martin?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a tough group. I wouldn't want to appear before them.
You're not as scary as you think.
Thank you for coming forward and stepping up in the community for this vacant position. My first question is, what was my first question? I'm just having fun trying to loosen it up a little bit. With the school committee, what do you, what would you consider its greatest weakness?
The greatest weakness of the school committee? I guess I probably wouldn't frame it as a weakness, but I do see certain struggles at reading the paper and knowing that you all are struggling with open meeting law and seeing some of those tensions even come up tonight. So I guess I see that as some challenges that need to be faced, and perhaps something that I could help to contribute to the tone and helping make things go well and assuming good intent and things like that.
Thank you. My next question has to do with the Greenfield City Charter. It allows for the mayor to be a member with full voting rights on the school committee. Do you consider that worth challenging, or do you consider the being on the, the mayor being on the committee a legitimate position?
I haven't thought about it exhaustively, but I would say I think having the mayor on the school committee has been valuable in some ways and challenging in other ways. I think that's probably, I don't have, I don't come down strongly one way or the other. I do think it's kind of interesting to vote as a member of a committee on a budget that goes forward and then be in the position of cutting that budget before it goes to city council. So I think that creates some interesting dynamics, but I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Good point. Just for the record, I think I have voted in 10 consecutive budget votes and abstained.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So Glenn, Member Exstrom pointed out that your address isn't on your materials. Could you state your address for the record?
Sure, it's 20 Myers Farm Road in Greenfield.
Thank you. And Member Hones has a question.
Hello, thanks. Thank you for applying for the job. My question had to do with what you might bring to the school committee in the way of budget and finance. Member Exstrom has clarified the position. The open term is for seven months, and we are in the midst of budget. And what would you, what do you see you might bring to us as a resource for us?
Yeah, well, I am currently a project manager for the Interaction Institute for Social Change on several different projects that involve me kind of having to keep an eye on the budget and do invoicing and kind of manage all the kind of challenges in terms of working in the public sector and all of the different Ts that need to be crossed and Is that need to be dotted. So I do have some experience looking at budgets.
Thank you.
Just thank you for applying.
You're welcome.
I have two questions. From your vantage point, how should the committee focus its energy for the next seven months?
Hmm, let's see. Well, I mean, I guess I come to this from a very touchy-feely world of the Interaction Institute for Social Change in terms of working with groups and getting people talking and rebuilding relationships. I see relationship strengthening and building work that needs to happen here. So I would say that would be really important because, like I was saying in my opening remarks, the challenges ahead of the schools are great. Even just keeping on top of the existing challenges takes a lot, most of the available bandwidth. And so we all, working together, need to have good relationships with each other. And sometimes when there's breakdown in process, it can create conflicts in relationships between each other, and that can impact your work and your ability to get the needed things done that are important for the students. So I think that's some of the key work that I see.
Thank you. And what about the Greenfield Public Schools are you most proud and excited about?
Hmm, well, I guess we got a little picture of it tonight with the students. I'm excited about the work that's happening, working with very young people in terms of looking at getting them connected to food systems and composting and things like that. I think that's really, really important, crucial for the work going forward. There's, I mean, even just in the superintendent's report, there's so many different initiatives and exciting directions that are happening.
Thank you. Member Exstrom?
Why do you want to do this? And I, just to clarify, so when I, before I ran, I read, I was pretty focused in ensuring that the students received the best education possible, and also focused on special education and that being the best education possible. And that's still what drives me today, and so I'm just curious.
Yeah. Well, I guess I spoke to this a little bit in my opening remarks, but, and I've been recently watching a lot of Pete Buttigieg's comments in his run for president, and he's a mayor of South Bend, Indiana, and so like, why do you want to do this? And he talks a lot about, you know, seeing a fit between work that needs to be happen, that needs to happen, and his ability to be useful. And I guess seeing, you know, the opportunities and challenges for education, wanting to really get our students ready for the challenges they're going to be facing, and bringing together some of what I know from youth substance use prevention coalitions and coalition-building work, and teaching groups how to work together to achieve big, big goals and dreams, the racial equity work that I've gotten to do. I think that there's a match there. And I know each of you has your own process that we haven't been led into, what's going on in your mind in terms of what are the particular needs of this school committee and which one of these candidates is going to fit. So I don't know for sure that I am the best person for the job. The committee would be the best at evaluating that, but I thought there was enough of a match that I wanted to put myself forward. And I'll say one more thing is that one thing that occurred to me is kind of, I think, like a lot of working people, I'm feeling stretched, and I'm not even a parent, you know, but I think about parents and how they kind of decide to take on this impossible job in addition to everything else. And that's kind of the way school committee was feeling to me, like a little bit of an insane calling, like, sure, you know, add it to the, add it to the list, because there just seemed to be something that I couldn't let go of, no matter how many times I tried to convince myself I didn't have time to do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So at this point, we will open the floor to deliberation, and it's my understanding that we're looking for a simple majority vote on a new member. I was hoping to be able to swear in the new member immediately this evening, but I don't think that's going to be the case. However, the individual could join us at the table. They just can't vote on anything that may come up.
And can we invite the people back in?
Yes, absolutely. Glenn, if you want to invite everybody back in, obviously, they don't have to, but everyone is welcome to come back. Okay, no takers. All right, well, let's...
We're going to decline the material.
Super.
If you want to bring one of us in.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, do we want to start with a motion at all?
So what are you looking forward from us, I guess?
In the past, we've had, we would just start with a motion to nominate somebody and then go from there. At the Policy Subcommittee, though, we have been discussing other ways to do this sort of thing. One of the ways that was suggested was be to go to each individual person and let each individual person say what they, who they think is the best fit. That might be, I'm seeing nodding over here. Do we want to try out that new way of doing things?
Try that, then everybody gets to say something, and then we can...
And then we can go from there? How do you feel about that, Bill? I can't read your face. Does that feel like a good thing for you, us to do?
Do I have a poker face?
No.
Can you read me?
No, you've got the mayor face.
Thank you for that compliment.
Everyone, I think we have consensus on that then, right? Okay, great, go ahead.
I'm pleasantly impressed by the four candidates. It's just wonderful to see the caliber of people that come forward to volunteer their time, and certainly, as some of them mentioned it, not at the best time of the committee. But I see the committee as a, I don't see it as stressful at all. I think it's been a great dialogue, some, nobody agrees all the time, and that's just the way people are. You get a group of people together, they have different opinions, and I think the more diverse opinions you have, the better the result. And so I'm impressed particularly with Jean Wall. I like her realistic approach to, kind of like the sun in the sky and the winter of days. I see her also as having a lot of relationship-type of goals, working with the committee, and I think that's helpful. Seven months, I failed to answer, ask a question about, you know, you only have a certain amount of time to run for election. Are you going to do this by the end of May, or, you know, is this seven months? So I think that long-term relationship, as you know, I have seven months also, and actually looking forward to that. I'd also like to say that the candidates, Ellison, Glynnis, I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. Ellison was very impressive, and certainly Doug, who's here often, is very good, and Glenn is bringing a whole new perspective, at least from my angle, I see him as providing a whole youth perspective coming from the groups he works with. So I think if we were going to scale them, I'd go Jean, Ellison, Doug, and Glenn.
Thank you. Member Hones?
No. I enjoyed listening to all four people. I think we're lucky, people in the community want to serve. What I was thinking about the whole time, I think, was reflected in my question, we have seven months, we're in the middle of budgets, we're not getting the budget we want, what are we going to do? I'd like to hire Mr. Johnson. I think he'd be great to be a consultant to the school committee. I felt that way about everyone, but I think I also, for the seven-month opening, would lean toward Jean Wall because my reasoning would be that she's really been involved in the city side of things and is always a strong advocate for the schools. What occurs to me is that we've had to pick up in our budget several hundred thousand dollars, maybe I'm off on the amount of money, in what I would call capital expenses, paying for roofs or not getting technology that used to be in capital. I'd love to get someone who could help us argue for more things covered under capital with the mayor. And I think the, you know, maybe there's ways that we could work better as a group, but we need to work closely with the city. I think she would bring that, and it would be an asset over the next several months. So she would be at the top of my list, and then I'd have to think in second, because it is just a short term, so I'm kind of focused on money.
Member, is that it? Okay. Member Karen?
I agree. Also, I was just really happy that there were four candidates. It's really wonderful, especially since often just running for election, we don't, we have uncontested seats, so to have four people show up for an appointment, it's really wonderful. If I was to, I would, I have two choices that I think would be really wonderful. That would be my top two choices, and that was Ms. Garrus and Mr. Sellin. I really appreciated both their fresh perspectives, very different perspectives, but still thinking that same thought process of what I believe a budget is a value statement, and also just seemed to be able to see a picture on all sides, which is something we're working on as a committee. All of us come at things from very direct positions, and sometimes that leads to us struggling with each other because we all have very different thoughts, which is important. But having the ability to see all of the picture may help us move forward a little bit better. So if I was, I guess if I was to rank all four, I would put Ms. Garrus and Mr. Sellin right at the top for me, and then Mr. Johnson, and then Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Katie. I'm really appreciative of all the candidates, and I think everyone is bringing something special to the table. I think that my first pick would be Mr. Johnson, and this is because of his diverse background. And I think coming to the board with board background is going to be really, really key. I also see from his experience and have seen him out in the community, and I know that he has strong relationships with key stakeholders, and I think that that's incredibly powerful. And then his background and knowledge of education is also incredibly helpful. So he's my number one pick. And then from there, I would, I would say that Mr. Sellin is a very, very close second. My favorite thing about Doug is that he is so tapped into what we're doing here, and he has strong relationships with our teachers, which I just think is fantastic, and I think that that's really, really key. And he's a volunteer at the middle school. I don't think he mentioned that, but yeah. And I was also very, very impressed with Ms. Garrus here in the audience. Thank you for staying. I really appreciate everything that you had to say and your whole energy and everything. So that would be, those would be my top three. Member Exstrom? he has strong relationships with key stakeholders, and I think that that's incredibly powerful. And then his background and knowledge of education is also incredibly helpful. So he's my number one pick. And then from there, I would, I would say that Mr. Sellin is a very, very close second. My favorite thing about Doug is that he is so tapped into what we're doing here, and he has strong relationships with our teachers, which I just think is fantastic. And I think that that's really, really key. And he's a volunteer at the middle school, I don't think he mentioned that, but yeah. And I was also very, very impressed with Ms. Garrus here in the audience, thank you for staying. I really appreciate everything that you had to say, and your whole energy and everything. So that would be, those would be my top three. Member Ekstrom?
I'm sure it will come as no surprise that I actually concur with Katie's ranking and selections. I really, I appreciate the time that Doug has invested in the district. But also, truthfully, I appreciate his thinking about the budget and saying we need to stop focusing on cutting and talking more about how to bring income in, and that's sort of echoes things that I've been saying. And I always like when people agree with me, so that would be helpful. But truth be told, I don't think that we would be unfortunate to have any of these people join our little happy group here, so.
My thoughts. Thank you. Member Ward?
Jean Wall.
Okay, so at this point, we have, like, we have our ranked choice, this is the one thing we didn't think through. We've all had a chance to deliberate. Did anybody want to put a motion forward? Mayor Martin?
I'll move that the committee accept the candidacy and appoint Jean Wall.
Second.
Seconded by Member Ward, okay. Any comments? Yes?
I agree with Whomever, just said that all the candidates have something to offer us, and I'll support the motion, because I think right at this moment, our finances are the key to everything, getting a stronger budget than what it looks like we're going to get. And I think Jean has the most direct voice with city to help us.
Any other comments? So I know Jean, I work with, or work with, I'm on the League of Women Voters with Jean, I am so supportive of her efforts with the Greenfield Public Library and everything else that she does for our community, I think it's fantastic. However, what I heard today was actually a misunderstanding of the school budget. And I'm taking note of that, because I think it's important for us to better communicate about our budget. But what I am hearing is not accurate, and I am very, I have reservations about inviting that in as well. I heard that the school budget was a burden, and I don't believe that the school budget is a burden. I believe that we have the ability to pay for the services that our students need, and to meet the needs of our students here in Greenfield. And although we're all coming from different economic situations, I believe that Greenfield has the ability to do that. So I cannot support this motion, unfortunately.
Could I ask what was inaccurate?
I felt that the discussion around school choice out was conflated. I also felt that it's very, it is not entirely accurate to represent the school budget with just the bottom line of the 32 million, because it doesn't take into account special funding that is specifically earmarked for education to serve our children. So it's just, to me, it feels like a reflection of how it is difficult to understand the budget, and that's what I'm seeing reflected. And as I noted, I'm taking note of that, because I think we need to do a better job. Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wouldn't want to move off the tracks here and discuss the budget when we're discussing the candidates for selection. I do want to point out, though, that the, Ms. Wall recognized the choice-out situation. Those figures are not inflated, it's $3.8 million a year. And a turnaround in that particular area would be very helpful to the budget. And it is also true that the town budget provides $32 million just for educational services, it's actually outlined in page three or four of the budget book. So the idea that it's not a concern by everyone, at least from my phone and cell and face, I get a lot of talk about too much money being spent, tax rates too high, taxes are too high, somebody's making too much money, what's going on with this and that. So in the overall discussion, we need to really address the increasing costs of education. And of the four candidates this evening, there was one who definitely wants to address that. And that's very parallel to my thinking, and I think it's critically important. And when we talk about values, we cannot talk about insolvency when we make a budget. Our values are to survive, our values are to get by with what we have with every service and program that's ongoing. So when I say, is this an issue, I think this is a rallying call for all of education across Massachusetts. The legislature has been defunct. They've been 27 years not doing it. So they need to address the issue. Right now, they're having some repercussions about even discussing an increase of a billion over the billion that was increased. So they need to address it, and they are. If they don't come through with extra funds and special programs and transportation and curriculum enhancement, then we have a number of districts in the state that are having a problem. And as, thank you Superintendent, sent an email earlier today about an article in the paper, and there's another lawsuit in the wing. So, I mean, we haven't had one since the early 1990s, which forced the legislature to come up with more money. And then a court case in the early 2000s, which forced the legislature to come up with more money. And now we have, we have, at the grassroots level, at the teacher level, at the property owner taxpayer level, we have a crisis. So we need the money that should be going to education. So that's why I support Jean Wall.
Member Ekstrom?
My reservation with Ms. Wall is that she was sort of hyper-focused on budget, and there are so many other things that we do aside from that, and I'm not discrediting the importance of it by any means. But that isn't the only thing that we do. And there is more to providing an education for the students than that singular point. So that's my thought process.
Any further deliberation? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Thank you, just one last comment. I think there was a focus on the budget, but I believe she said the crisis is now, and we need to work through this budget, I think something along those lines, I'm paraphrasing. But thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to appoint Jean Wall to the Greenfield School Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So I don't know what we do with that, really.
Can we all look at one time on each of those people? Would that help? I don't know.
You can move another person. You have to move until you get four votes.
Yeah. Okay. Is there, Member Ekstrom?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Allison Garrus to fill the seat on the school committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Any discussion? Member Hollins?
I thought she was a very interesting person. I, I think there's probably a lot she could bring to the school system. I don't know, you know, I said, my question was around money, I don't know stepping in that she would be able to help us with, again, this is just a seven-month fill-in with what's on the table right this minute. But I could see her being a contributing member of a school committee at some time.
Any further discussion? Member Ekstrom?
I think she has a breadth of knowledge that she could bring to us, inclusive of just being in different places within Western Massachusetts, and having been in Brattleboro and seeing how work in Vermont is done, which is different than how it is we do it in Massachusetts. And having a child starting in the district is certainly a reason to want to be part of the process. I think that she would fit in well with the very strong personalities that we all have, to our credit. And I would enjoy hearing a person's opinion who hasn't necessarily been involved directly with schools and districts and things like that.
Mayor Martin?
As I did mention, I appreciated the experience in coming before the committee as a candidate. I have, I have some less appreciation for the disbursement of educational funds when they get filtered by other mid-level agencies, whether they're at the state level, mid-level agencies, or whether in the regional educational type of collaboratives. I know there was a law passed about, Manchester was still at DESI, allowing funds to go from the Board of Education to these mid-level groups across the state, and then they would become the regional-type depositories for funds that, I don't know exactly where they came from, but they were, they were funds that could have been used for local districts. So I'm not, the collaboratives and such having a link to direct funds and having a number of alternative-type of educational establishments I see as being competitive with the local districts. I know we have contracts with them, I have no idea how much money we contract with them for, but I can't see the collaborative having a member on the school committee in the district, even though that may happen. So I can't support this nomination.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Any additional comments? I did have a concern about the relationship, the job relationship, but, and I haven't, I didn't, like, contact Ethics Commission or anything on it. But hearing from Ms. Garrus about, you know, other members, and it sounds that she has an understanding that there is no conflict, I would feel comfortable with her joining. I know that there are some times, you know, in small cities like this, we sometimes have overlaps, and there may be a time where she would need to recuse herself. But I believe that we can figure that out as we go. So that's my, those are my thoughts. Yes, Member Ekstrom?
For the record, I had those same concerns, particularly because I do spend time sitting in the boardroom with collaborative. And Ms. Garrus actually did help to alleviate some of those concerns. But it is, sorry, but it is a real concern, and so I don't not understand.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, so the motion on the table is to appoint Allison Garrus to the Greenfield School Committee to fill the vacant seat. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Three noes, okay. All right.
One of these will give four.
All right, I'll move, I'll move to appoint Mr. Glenn Johnson to the Greenfield School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom. Just quickly, I mean, I feel like I said this earlier, I feel like his diverse background is going to be an asset for us, and his relationships that he has with other community organizations and individuals that are key stakeholders with the Greenfield Public Schools is very much going to come, be a powerful tool for the Greenfield Schools. And so that's my position. Any discussion? Member Ekstrom?
I think that he would be a wonderful addition to the group. I think that he has a lot of background sort of in group dynamics, which sounds silly to talk about when you're discussing sort of school committee and things like that, but it's important. And I think he's got much more international perspective than we do, being focused as we are on school committee here in Greenfield. So I think that would be a good asset to the committee.
Any, Mayor Martin?
I'd just like to apologize for not offering my psychiatric mental health RN license and my experience for this committee during the time I've been here. But I don't think that's where we need to focus. I think we have, we're all adults, we can communicate, we need to back up what we say, and we need to provide some type of leadership in a direction that has a sustainable and a high probability of success. So I can't.
Member Hollins?
I thought Mr. Johnson was a very interesting person. I think there's an awful lot to being on a school committee to learn, I think with a seven-month term to fill in, someone who's just completely new, I would, I don't think I could support it, even though I think he'd be very interesting. I think we need somebody that can step in and really help us in the next seven months. And then there'll be an election, and there'll be someone.
I actually think that he does have a tremendous amount of experience to be able to just jump in and help us. His work with the Communities That Care Coalition is just an easy, obvious example of that, also with the opioid task force. I just, I think that he does actually come to the table with quite a bit, that he can contribute immediately. I saw a hand over here, no? Any other comments?
I just wanted to say, all the candidates would be new.
Oh, true. Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the table to appoint Mr. Glenn Johnson to the Greenfield School Committee to fill the vacant seat. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, all those opposed? Three noes, okay, stalemate. Last one's a charm. I'll move to appoint Mr. Doug Sellin to the Greenfield School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Member Ekstrom first.
Jinx.
I've already spoken to why I think Doug is, would be a great addition to the team. I stand by that. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Okay, so there's a motion on the table to appoint Mr. Doug Sellin to the Greenfield School Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And anyone opposed?
No.
Three noes, okay. So I don't know what to do, yes? Member Ward?
Ms. Garrus was my second choice. If it pleases the committee, I'd make a nomination to appoint her.
Um.
Can we do that again?
I.
I'll second if that's what we need to do.
I mean, we just voted on it, I mean, technically, rules of procedure, I mean, I don't know, I'm looking to you, Bill, can you help out?
Can we take a five-minute recess? Sure. What, you can make, it's a new motion? You can make a?
As a new motion. I'll entertain it, as a new motion, I mean, I don't know, I feel like this is an unclear, unclear parliamentary question.
Can we take a five-minute recess while our parliamentarian who's not here looks up?
Yeah, let's do that, let's take a five-minute recess. Susan, are you looking it up? Thank you, Secretary Ekstrom. We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll hold on that, we'll see if it's even, because we just had the motion. We'll take a five-minute recess, we'll hold on that, we'll see if it's even, because we just had the motion.
Get Garris second.
Member Ekstrom, did you, you looked up something? Tell me what you, you're.
There has been other situations similar to this within the state, and they elected to, they found themselves at a stalemate unless a committee member changed their vote. And that was a quick perusal. If we would like to get more in-depth, which I suspect we'd like to do, then we can table this, and I will do more research on our behalf. I'm sure we all want to make sure that we're doing things as they should be done.
Could I also make a comment?
Sure.
I seem to remember when we redid the policy on filling positions, and I can look up the minutes, that there was some discussion that if it's too close to the end of the term, the committee might decide not to fill it. It may have nothing to do with this vote, but I.
No, that's not, that's not in the policy.
It's in the discussion.
I'm looking up a motion to reconsider. Pardon?
I believe only three members can reconsider, that would be Member Ward, Member Hollins, and Member Martin.
Yeah, someone who voted against it. So at the council, we wait, at the council, they wait until essentially the next meeting, right? They have to file with the clerk to reconsider within a certain time period, and then it gets brought up again at the next meeting.
That is true, but usually at the end of the meeting, the council asks for any motions for reconsideration. The current meeting.
During the meeting?
During the meeting.
After a failed vote, Mayor?
At the end of the meeting, usually the president will ask if there are any motions for reconsideration. So you can do it any time from the vote to, I think it's 48 hours later. I'm not sure of the hours.
I don't know, this, what I'm reading online is saying that it would have to come after the other business. Okay, so, I mean, reading that, feel that we need to move on to our other business. I think the best thing to do is to table until our next meeting or a special meeting. We do have the other business of the transportation, and we can make sure that we're following the rules of procedure. So I moved to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that looks unanimous, you're a yes? Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was an interesting vote, thank you, everybody. Unfortunately, we are going to table, and we're moving on to the next business item.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can let them know.
I'll go tell them.
Thank you, if you could go tell them, and I'm going to get, make sure that this is set up for the GHS civics update.
Um, can you go? Can you go, there's sort of like that, or anything? There's a number, and then click on that, yes. Oh, wait, is that even here? Okay, there, so it should be. It should give us like a code that we have to.
I'm trying to.
What are you looking for? Yeah, the policy doesn't say anything about that.
The policy doesn't say anything about us deciding not to fill. I just read it.
I didn't say the policy did, I said when it was being discussed.
Right, we don't have to.
There was some talk about if it was very close to when the term ended, and that I could go find the minutes, but I'd remember it was discussed, if there were like two months left, you didn't have to fill it, but it's, I never said it was.
I know, I'm just saying, it's not in the policy.
No, it isn't.
I just don't know if it's charter.
It's, I remember Tim Carroll commenting.
You guys want to like navigate to your page?
It makes sense if it got too close.
It's on the jump drive? Never heard of it called a jump drive.
What do you call it?
There it is.
It's not up there.
We present, we click on that WP down at the very bottom. Yeah, to the right. Yeah, click on that, and hit reconnect. And then the screen's supposed to give us a number. I know, we don't have a code yet.
From the projector?
Code, where's the code?
From the projector.
Yeah, it'll show up on the screen.
Yep. DESI. No, I have it, the school's policy, not the school committee's policy. Well, procedure, they have a procedure, okay, is that, they were having a problem with.
You all are my favorite people. I love you all, I want you to know that from the bottom of my heart. I'll bring you lattes.
No need for lattes, no need.
His point was that, that means that kids are going to be afraid to go to the bathroom.
No, no, a big smile.
The way I understood it. And so.
Oh yeah, don't say don't.
Two-minute passing period is not the time for the bathroom. But I don't think any teacher is telling a child they can't go to the bathroom during class. So I think that that's the way that either, we're not understanding it, he's saying a teacher is telling his child that he can't go to the bathroom during class, because he has two minutes to get there, so that's when he should do it, but give me a break. I need more than two minutes to go to the bathroom, especially if they expect him to walk. It's in the middle school. Do you have a child, the newest?
You have two children?
Mm-hmm, seventh grader and a fifth grader.
They're picking up those dumbbells and.
Start ringing now?
Yeah, nine o'clock on a Wednesday.
We've had problems with the middle school for years, that's not a new thing. But the problem is, when something gets a bad reputation, it's nearly impossible to turn it around, right? It's true for anything, if you like give one bad Yelp review to a restaurant, what happens?
It's very hard, it's very hard.
And this is the point I've had with you before, and I'm not saying about the budget, but when we cut budgets like we have had to do, because.
Yeah, there's a couple new ones, like Girls Club, or something else on there.
What the school needs versus what it can't have, is not the same. And the town, who's already losing faith in a certain specific area of their town, aka the middle school, runs further away, increasing our choice of cost. I'm not saying the only way to fix it is to.
That's why we had an option.
The middle school, parents of middle school children are inherently. It's not educated. They are, they just are, because what, because middle schoolers are getting autonomy, parents don't want to give up. We have a huge transition from three elementary schools to one building.
Documents, lessons, everything.
Huge socioeconomic.
It scares me, that scares me.
Two of those elementary schools.
I found out the first week.
And what do we know about socioeconomic?
And you don't, you don't have them anywhere else?
I had some of them from another one.
So then we've got all these like sheltered children shoved in with these. And this, this grade was rocked for my fifth grader, two years ago, it was rocked. And he had never needed a school.
Practiced last year, put a hard copy.
This year for my fifth grader. My kids are not really sheltered. I'm like, I'll just later walk to school, walk home from school, I don't pick you up, it's raining or snowing, see you when you get back.
I don't know.
Everybody has a hard copy, right?
Everybody has a hard copy.
So can we just.
So that's what I know.
People.
They can all see it, we can.
Thank you though for your efforts.
It can pop up right.
I know, it's like if a code pops up, then that's what we are.
We need to redistrict, but what are you going to do? What are you going to do? What do you think parents are going to do when they need to, if they were supposed to be in full forms and we redistrict them to go to the end, they're gone.
I don't feel fresh as a daisy.
I'm fading.
So we had a certain options, so the parents would.
But nobody was choosing it. The numbers were going down and down and down, and now they're even down so low. Yeah, no, it's still there. The MSA program is still there, it's just housed in the middle school. I know it is, my kids go to school.
Program with its own principal.
Well, it has its own teachers, other teachers, the people who teach MSA are not the same as the other teachers, but they have so few students in that building now, that it's not a different building, that they had to give those teachers some minutes of class. So my middle school student.
So here's what's happening, he's going to be.
Because they didn't have enough special ed support. But they couldn't, I couldn't have put them in.
He's just going to fill our screen.
You want to make it full screen?
So I couldn't, I wasn't going to risk it.
But you send special ed teachers where you have the kids.
Yeah.
Okay. Here we are, we're back.
The nature of the age of child and the nature of parents who want to like clean.
Thank you so much, I know I said that earlier. Hey, Katie. I gave him that, but he's actually going to shoot the laptop. Okay. Hey.
Is that your gavel?
It's my gavel.
Your empty coffee.
Thank you all so much, and thank you so much for your patience, and thank you also for this pivot here. We were obviously hoping to have the projector up and running, but we can't quite get it. So all school committee members have printed copies of this in your packet. There's an extra printed copy here, and I believe GCTV is going to film your laptop screen. So thank you for coming, this is the, we've been excited to talk with you about the civics update. So I will just go ahead and yield the floor to you all, and are we ready? Everybody ready? Okay, great, take it away.
Thanks for having us, I'm joined tonight by Terry Dodge and Luke Martin.
Thanks for having us. Um, I'm joined tonight by Terry Dodge and Luke Martin, two.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm joined tonight by Terry Dodge and Luke Martin, two history teachers um, who have been instrumental in the work that you are going to be revealed tonight. Um, the rest of the history department as well, and we've been collaborating and trying to, um, lay out a plan for not only the planning of the rollout of civics in eighth grade, but it really is a K through twelve initiative, so we'll have to do some work in nine through twelve and really what we'll do in the future for those grades as well. So we're gonna go through that tonight. I'm gonna turn the floor over to Ms. Dodge. Her and Ms. Zimmerman are the hands behind this PowerPoint. They are the two eighth grade teachers who will be, um, the ones in charge of actually teaching the new civics course and rolling out this plan.
Good evening. The, um, second slide that you have, uh, is the actual act, and it's an act to promote and enhance, um, civic engagement. And basically, just what it's saying is they want students to have a strong foundation in civics so that they can be active, um, citizens in a democratic society. Basically, that's what they're saying. So they want everyone from pre-K through, um, all the grays from pre-K through, um, twelve to include civics more in their curriculum. On the next page, it's a Desi timeline. And as you can see at the top, um, it says, um, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen was the year that they wanted us to start planning what was going on. They wanted us to be immersed into what was the law actually saying and how could we incorporate it into, um, our school or into our curriculum in our school. And so the history, um, teachers, Tracy Creek as well, um, we've been going to some PDs, um, to kind of wrap our heads around what it is we need to do. Um, so definitely, um, they want, and very strongly, they want us to implement a civics course in the eighth grade. And so that's why, um, Mrs. Zimmerman and I have, um, a, you know, a huge interest in it because, um, they wanted it implemented in like next year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So we're actually planning and implementing it at the same time, just so that we can be on track. And then the realignment of high school history courses along with new, um, newly formed electives will come the following year. On the next page, you'll actually see a specific, um, timeline. It's the same GHS timeline, but it's just specific as to what we'll be teaching. Um, again, eighth grade planning and implementation, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. Then grade nine through twelve, planning that same year as we're implementing it, they're planning. And then the following year, two thousand twenty, two thou- thousand twenty-one, um, nine through twelve will be implementing it. And so we just listed what we'll be doing. And then, um, you know, full well knowing that a new curriculum like this, we're, we're gonna need a lot of purchases. So we've, um, in eighth grade anyways, we've spent a lot of time researching textbooks. Um, I'm pretty sure that we have one that we recommended to Karen. Um, and I think that we're, we've started putting the curriculum map together and some lessons together. So I, I'm, you know, I'm pretty sure we're well on our way to, to doing this. We just need to, you know, go gung ho in full force. On the next page, it's just accentuating the priority this year will be in grade eight, um, and doing the full year civics course. And all, it's just important to note that also, you know, Desi wants to make sure that, um, the standards for history and social science practices through, from pre-K through, um, through twelve. And so somehow, I mean, we're just presenting tonight on grade eight through, um, the twelfth, um, grade, but we'll have to figure out how we're going to, um, you know, be integrated as a, as a whole curriculum, as a whole, whole school district. On the next page, it says grade eight Massachusetts history standards. I thought it was just interesting to note the difference in curriculum change from, uh, World History One in the eighth grade. Um, now we're incorporating, um, the US history and social sciences. So it will take some time to recreate the curriculum with lesson plans and materials, so I hope everyone is patient with us. Um, on the next page. Sure.
The standard by the state, the state's determinable standard is Massachusetts.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes. Yes. Well. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. Um, so, go ahead.
Sorry, back on that page again.
Yes.
Uh, in our current curriculum, are we dealing with the development of the US government, our rights and responsibilities of citizens? Seems kind of the structure of Massachusetts, state and local government, just kind of basic.
Yeah, so currently you would get that within US History One and US History Two, which are currently offered, um, tenth and eleventh grade typically. There is no separate self-contained civics course, which is what is now mandated by the state in eighth grade as, as a, a course in itself. Elsewhere, that is often done, and it's, it's not something brand new, but it's now required by law and by the curriculum frameworks that are updated. And also, I don't, I don't actually think, back to your previous question, th- this is not part of the, the national common core. This, this reform is a state-driven reform that's been about three or four years in the making, and they just finalized it, um, maybe six months ago.
Six months.
But it's, it's entirely a state, a state thing. I think there, there's a trend toward it nationally, but there's not a coordinated, um, oversight nationally that this is out.
Even more impressive. Thank you.
Yeah.
Member Hollins, can you turn your mic on? Hold on, just let her.
I, I was wondering in the, um, in the new, you know, rights and responsibilities of citizens, if students in Greenfield are able to take advantage of the courthouse being here.
Oh, I'm sure they will be. I mean, that, that's, when we get to the next page, um, we'll be talking about including community partnerships and absolutely. I mean, we're, we'll welcome any ideas because of course we're still in the, um, you know, we're still in the planning phase. And so we will, you know, we're looking for as many, um, people in the community to be partners with, so absolutely.
We, we also currently have both middle school and high school classes that, um, participate in courtroom exercises at the courthouse.
We also currently offer a law elective, and that class in itself, they take a tour, they're invited down to the courthouse, and we also had a judge come and present to our students this semester.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. Um, member Exrem said she wants to go. So, um, I'm just gonna ask that members actually hold their questions until the end, till we get through the presentation, then we can go back. So please continue, thank you.
And, um, one of the pieces of, um, this law requires us to have a civics project. Um, that includes, um, building relationships with community partners, as you were just saying. Um, and so we're really excited about this. Um, the goal is for us to, or the kids to learn local history, practice historical thinking, um, and then use technology, all the while building relationships with community partners. Um, what's very, uh, what I found, um, fascinating was, um, uh, Ms. Zimmerman and myself met with, um, uh, someone from the Greenfield Library and the Historical Commission, and they're so excited about working with us. And, um, the chairman from the Historical Commission was outstanding. He's the one that gave us many of these suggestions that are on the possible projects page. Um, so we're looking to extend more partnerships. These are just the people that we worked with, uh, or talked with. Um, one project that I think is very interesting, um, is working with the Historical Commission and working on them, uh, creating a historic district. Um, and then really just expanding, uh, the kids' research of the town of history and incorporating that into the curriculum. Again, they're all in planning, the planning phases. And then there's always money that comes with something like this. And so this is just a, an estimate, um, of what it may cost. Definitely for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, that's probably pretty accurate based on, um, you know, receiving, um, purchasing textbooks and materials and things like that.
And moving forward, um, I just added in for the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, um, costs, because of our growing numbers and because of the implementation that will be necessary in grades nine through twelve, an additional history teacher will be needed during that school year. So I just wanted that to be on there as well. That is the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Um, any questions, comments? I see member Hollins.
Uh, the additional teacher will be needed in grades nine to twelve.
Currently, with the growth, it'll be a nine through twelve teacher that would be needed in the two thousand twenty school year.
So the class sizes are growing at the high school?
Correct.
Nice.
Member Exrem.
I just wanted to make a random suggestion for possible project.
Hmm.
So, uh, you know the Cory store they do on NPR?
Could you say that again?
Storycorps, that's it. Be really cool if students from the high school or middle school came over and spoke with members of, at the senior center and talked about what their memories of the local community were when they were living here.
That's a really great idea.
Cause Storycorps, you can go, I mean, you can go listen at the Library of Congress, is, I believe is where it is, but I'm not certain. We need to go that far.
The big films.
We've, we've done that, actually. I've done that in the past year, uh, before it was this building, so, um, and there will, I should grab this, but the, the state law does require two, um, projects. One at the eighth grade level and then one subsequent to that. Um, so there will have to be another project along, that, that's the state law that was passed last year. And then separate from that are the curriculum frameworks that were entirely reformed, which, which facilitate these projects and put civics in the eighth grade. But there are two projects required by law now, two sort of community-based experiential projects. So that, that's a great idea for one of them.
Cool. Um, what happens to world history now? I apologize if I missed that detail.
No, that's a great question.
Right under, under the bus. Um, what we're currently thinking is that, um, the, the eighth grade civics curriculum would be followed in ninth and tenth grade with US History, one and then two. So that's moved forward slightly. And then after that would likely be some sort of combined world history course. So right now it's World History One and World History Two separately, and we may have to combine that as, as a single course. We only have a three-year requirement for graduation in history. If it was a four-year requirement, then you might still keep World History One and World History Two. Or the fourth could be fulfilled through various electives. But our thinking now, I think, is that, um, you're combining world history into basically a condol- consolidated course, and it comes later.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, uh, Mayor Martin first, then member Hollins.
I just wanna say thank you for bringing this forward and, uh, thank the legislature for passing a law that makes sense. Since I've been mayor, I've been asking for a civics course and local history in, in our curriculum at the high school. And the people you spoke with on Historical Commission are all very familiar with the dozens and dozens of people from Greenfield who have influenced not only the region but the world. So it'd be nice to have our students understand where they are and who their, who their ancestors were in this area and what they have done, cause it's, Greenfield is, uh, the Upper Pioneer Valley has been very creative and influential for centuries. So it's just such a pleasure to hear this. Thank you.
Member Hollins?
I, I didn't have a question so much, it's just a comment on the page that it says GHS timeline and rollout changes in the curriculum. In the left column at the bottom, it says the need for purchase of new texts, online sources, teacher support materials. I was just going to mention, I, I think I read in one of the reports that something, that you had just shown an interesting film at the high school. There was some film program you were. The book, you have the book to film club. Something. There was a film, and I was just gonna mention, is, is the primary teaching material a still, uh, textbook as opposed to trade books or films on social issues or scripts? You know, reader's theater that have social, um, justice plays? I was just wondering how diverse we are in selecting materials. I- i- is it only textbook or is it other things?
Definitely other things, but we have to have, we need to have a, a skeleton to go by. Um, this book that we purchased, um, uh, follows the frameworks pretty well, better than anything that we've, uh, looked at. But like, um, what teachers normally do, you have the textbook, but then you, you look for outside sources, um, to complement that textbook. So you're, you're correct. We don't just use the textbook.
And is it still about a hundred dollars a book?
Yeah.
And that's how you get to ten thousand?
Ninety, ninety maybe, something like that. Ninety-five, I think.
And I think it's important too with our population that we have a textbook available for all students in the classroom and then can use additional resources to supplement, but at least everyone's getting that foundation. So a lot of our students don't have access to internet or computer at home, so.
Any additional comments or questions? Um, I just wanna say thank you so much for all this extra effort. I mean, this is, this, I know that this takes a lot of work, um, to coordinate and to, um, roll out. And, um, I just really appreciate the work that's going into it. I know that it's been going on for a little while now. Um, so thank you very much for that. And then I am curious if there's anything that, um, really kind of, that you've come across in this preparation that you're really excited about, or that you think is going to be, you know, a real benefit to our students and that they will really enjoy and really take to.
Definitely connecting what they learn to what's happened in, in Greenfield. You know, learning about it and then actually researching what was going on in Greenfield at that particular time. Who were the people that were important? And still maybe having structures available to look at or, like, talking with people that, you know, may have grandfathers or grandmothers or whatever that was around during that time. Um, and I think, I just think that community project, um, is huge because I think that we're tapping into something that, and we haven't really done a good job in at all. I think the kids will get really excited by being involved in the community, and it will really brought, widen their horizons as to, why are you learning? Because right now, I don't know if you've been, how long it's been, that you've been in a classroom, but it's really hard to, um, to get them motivated to learn, and I think this is gonna be key.
Fantastic.
I'll just add that the, the, the major shift in the frameworks, not just in the project and not just in eighth grade, but the, the major sort of fundamental shift is, um, a little bit away from strictly historical content, which the current frameworks, which are about twenty years old, are, are mainly focused on just, you know, the events, the people, the, um, and, and the major shift is toward historical thinking skills and skills that will serve students, um, well everywhere. Um, finding and evaluating evidence and, and evaluating the credibility of sources. And there's a, there's a major shift to, to teaching those skills and integrating them with the historical content and with writing skills as well. Um, so that shift is something that most teachers welcome because they're, they're really transferable skills that kids need.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a refreshing thing to see, along with a civics course that almost any social study teacher will tell you should happen everywhere.
Thank you. Any closing remarks or questions?
I, I would like to remind the committee that this was in the, one of many items underneath one of the goals that you all voted, um, and that the high school staff that you see in front of you have worked diligently to bring this information forward. And it is almost ten o'clock and they're still here with us. So we appreciate what you're doing and we appreciate that you're bringing, uh, this information to life in a way that connects to students today and helps them understand the context and how important it is. Um, and I suggest that they watched this meeting as for the. Um, and I suggest that they watched this meeting as further, uh, evidence of civics matters in today's world and, uh, as a real-life example. So, thank you very much for your work with our students.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Right, there's that. Okay, everyone, let's focus. We do have a couple minutes left. Um, our next agenda item is a referral to Health Safety, Health and Safety Subcommittee. Um, you see it in your packet. This is, um, legislation that I believe, my understanding, is getting fast-tracked right now at the state level related to lead in drinking water at schools. Um, and it's my recommendation that the Subcommittee review to, um, put forward a recommendation to support the legislation. Um, so, unless there's any opposition to that, you have some summaries in your packet, and there could be additional materials that y'all would wanna look through. Everybody good with that? Moving that to Subcommittee. I'm seeing a consensus on that. And then, um, I will move to table, the Policy Manual, Section D, First Reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Karen. Um, all those in favor of moving to table?
Aye.
I, that, yes?
Can I just ask a question?
Are you voting yes on moving to table? Okay.
I have a question. Could you clarify what, what we have? Like, there's strikeouts and crossouts and bulbs. Are we looking at?
So, we just moved to table that, um, but yes, you're looking at.
Like, the one unauthorized signatures, does that mean the whole policy is?
Yeah, what's, what's struck out is what's struck.
Switch to the MAS C policy? Which one is that?
I'm just looking at authorized signatures, for example.
So, there's, so in your.
Asking, how can we review this and understand?
So, um, in your packet, there's two items related to Policy Section D. Um, one of them is the smaller one, has some rationale listed out related to the, um, changes to the policy. Also, there's Policy Subcommittee Minutes that are helpful, and in this larger packet of Policy D, you'll see the, um, suggested revised policy, and then, um, the, what has been taken, stricken. So, um, like on the first one, Fiscal Management Goals, this is the first reading of the new policy, and on the back is what has, was not accepted. And so, on the next one, you'll see that there are some strikeouts, and then you'll look on the back, too, that there is a policy that was not accepted. So, the one in the front.
So, the one, like, purchasing the entire policy is being deleted, even though some of the other wording is the same.
Right, we're just replacing it completely.
Uh, what page are you?
In that case, the suggestion is to replace the existing policy with the MAS C policy language, which is why ours is stro, struck and their, theirs is there. So, you're seeing our policy and the MAS C's policy here.
So, we have, um, pardon?
This, I just answered, could she email these questions to us, or we love to answer questions?
Yeah, if you wanna, Katie, as the chairperson, why don't you just send out an explanation of what it is that we're looking at?
Okay.
And just, yeah. And we can put everything together. Yeah. Thank you very much. So, we do have a need for some executive session. Um, I do wanna be conscious of our vote to adjourn at 10:00 PM. However, um, since we have 15 minutes left, I do think that we should at least start the conversation in executive session, um, and then we'll come out to adjourn at 10:00. Um, so, at this point, we're going to move to enter into executive session for MGL C30A 21, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and this is in relation to Unit C. Um, so, can we have a roll call to enter into executive session? Member Ekstrom.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Susan. And a roll call.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
I'm in, yes.
Great. So, let's go to the other room. We will not come back and vote on anything. You guys can start breaking down.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.